Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, July 12, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Eight members present.
Okay. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or liberation which are or may be before a city council, and profanity will not be permitted. After you recall, please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
I honor my husband, who is a true city of Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s until 2021. Stating trees not change fields in Monair. This is for you, Michael. We, the people of Monair, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, taxes, and voted. We have shut the town hall meeting to give a resounding no to developing the building, the empty school building. We have signed a petition to say we want a green state, not a building. We have property value and quality of life to protect. The Pennsylvania Constitution is titled "The Declaration of Rights." The entire article is concerned with establishing the principle that the people are the sovereign, not the state, which would include municipalities and school boards. They shall not harm the people or will be held accountable. We do not consent to a detrimental building remaining to decay the community we have built and maintained. Former mayor's pedudo was defeated and left in disgrace. He appointed a panel that claimed that the Monair School Building should remain. We, the people, have driven past former school buildings and heard the stories of human species and hallways and criminal acts around those buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of school except become a green state. The city controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the controller to protect the city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. Michael Lamb should have attended our meeting to explain why the waste, fraud, and abuse continues. Waste of thousands of dollars per month is occurring with Monair School. Fraud was perpetrated with the claim of community support or the sale of the building to a developer. Abuse is occurring due to the threat of blockbusting and intentional infliction of distress. Why won't he advocate for we, the people, who have been harmed by this detrimental building? Who does he serve? It is no wonder that issues with the school district persist. Tax imbalances don't exist. We have a controller that seems to care for the school district more than the people he is supposed to be serving. The memorial brings faith, its solutions for the peace, safety, and happiness of Monair. This was read at my husband's funeral. Fire Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His resigning dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and the one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Joanna Demme.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me today. I'm on my way into the building, so I will look forward to seeing you very, very soon. So I didn't want to miss my public moment, which is to say that I'm thankful for all the councils for looking into the Food Justice Fund plan. And I hope that discussions are productive today so that we can get the plan adopted as soon as possible without any delays. And once the plan is adopted, that we can get it up and running so that we can make sure that the impact is felt as soon as possible. So thank you so much for everyone who's taken the time to look forward to this. And we look forward to hearing the discussion today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Lee Delaney. I apologize if I did not pronounce your name correctly.
Good morning. My name is Dana Delaney, and I am the grassroots organizer at Just Harvest, and I live in Polish Hill. Today, I'm here in support of the effort and leadership of this council and Director Vargas in the passage of the Food Justice Fund. Thank you all for the work on making this reality. I've been coming here before you over the last few years because I've been working in food deserts and food apartheid neighborhoods across many of your districts. I have learned from many of the residents and community leaders firsthand what their barriers are and what they are doing to create real solutions, programs, and equitable access to food in their communities. Each neighborhood has different needs, and each neighborhood has different challenges. Many people are and have been working on these problems, many of them for years. Plans are in progress, and community support is behind them, and so much of their effort has already been made. However, there is one common thread that each of these neighborhoods have, and that is need. Regardless of what part of town, they need more resources. Need of real financial investment in food systems and infrastructure and healthy food access for its residents. Because the truth is that many of these urban farms, smaller organizations, and grassroots efforts have the will and the love and the knowledge, but they just lack the capacity to actually serve the greatness of that need, which is why we need the city's help. This is what the intention of this funding is to me and why I continue to fight for it. It is to help those doing the hard work supporting real community service and change, and to assure that the next generation, our kids, can grow up in safer and healthier communities than the ones that we currently have here now. A grant for a grassroots organization to support its mission or the growth of a small local business invested in providing healthy food options for its residents, that investment will pay dividends to the residents for years to come. It is also an opportunity for the city leaders to work together with their constituents, local groups, CDCs, coalitions, and alliances, to identify large-scale food access projects that would be community-led and in turn, community-supported. That is how council and the city can work to create real access and real equity for its residents, indeed, and not just in word. That is what the intention of these funds are, in my experience and my opinion as a grassroots organizer. A true investment in the equitable development of food systems and real food access in your neighborhoods. Neighborhoods that have all gone for way too long without. Thank you so much for your support in this. I am here to serve any of you in any of your districts to help you find the needs and to address those needs. Mr. Kraus, you know that we are here, we are committed as Just Harvest to make these food access solutions a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jody McLaughlin.
Yes, I am here. Thank you very much. My name is Jody McLaughlin, and I am a member of the Food Justice Fund Committee. I want to thank all of city council for getting the Food Justice Fund where it is today. With the creation of the Food Justice Fund and the passage of this plan proposal, Pennsylvania will be the first state to have a fund of this type in its largest urban areas. Philadelphia is currently working on its fourth round of funding through its Food Justice Initiative, and Pittsburgh is on track to award its first grantees by early next year. Pittsburgh is in a unique position to be a leading example in food justice. I wanted to speak today about the importance of sticking to the timeline submitted with the Food Justice Fund Plan. On Monday, I attended Agricultural Secretary Russell Redding's stop in Pittsburgh for the state's Urban Agricultural Week. Within the first five minutes, I was on site at Monacute Farm on the north side. I spoke with two people looking for additional funding to support the food work they do in Pittsburgh. Throughout the day, I heard from other people looking for funding opportunities, grant-writing assistance, and similar resources. All of this is desperately needed for community-level food access work to be done. The people I spoke with, as well as many others, are why it is important that we stay on target to release the grant application by fall 2023 and award grants by early 2024. In addition to Monday, several members of the Food Justice Fund Committee have been doing outreach for the past six months, and we have heard a similar message across the city. They need the Food Justice Fund in order to infuse healthy foods in their neighborhoods and revitalize the local food economy in an equitable way. They are eagerly waiting on the passage of this plan so the next steps Director Vargas mapped out with the Food Justice Fund Committee can happen in order for the program to be launched by fall 2023. I don't think I'm alone when I say how exciting it is to be at this moment. While there is much more work to do, I'm optimistic that we can do this work together so we can begin reinvesting in our communities as quickly as possible. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today, and again, I thank you for getting us this far. I look forward to hearing the discussion amongst council today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Christian.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jamie Marie Christian. I'm the executive director and founder of an organization called Let Us Turn Up the Beat. We're in Carrick. This is probably my fifth time speaking to all of you about the Food Justice Fund, and I'm sure you're sick of seeing my face. I have no poetry for you today. But again, I will thank city council and Mayor Gani's office for including the Food Justice Fund in the 2023 budget. Thank you again to councilwoman Gross, Warwick, Kell Smith, and Strasburger for your support, your leadership, and all the positive feedback. To Director Vargas and the Food Justice Fund Committee, including task force and communications subcommittees, thank you so much. It's truly been a labor of love for many of us, and I couldn't be prouder to be part of a more unique, diverse, and productive group. I was going to share the great experience I had on Monday when I met PA Secretary of Ag Russell Redding and State Rep Emily Kincaid. They both echoed what I stated last Wednesday in regards to interdependence, lacking in our agricultural communities at the state, county, and city levels. I can go on and on about that and their interest in what I shared about the need for access to culturally relevant foods and how that conversation needs to get started. But I'm going to tell you about Tuesday instead, which was not as great. I received two emails saying that my grant applications were denied. One was from a very large charitable organization, and they will not provide funding to organizations to make purchases from farms as an incentive, which I had intended to do. I've turned down other grants recently because they wanted to cut my farmers out of the picture, and I'm not willing to sell my soul for $11,000. And it's a lot of money, but in its ethics. So the project that I applied for funding for is a produce stand at my location in Carrick, which will be sourced from local farms. The last Monday of every month, we'll offer a free produce stand. Every other day, the produce will be priced at wholesale, and it would still be much more cost-effective and equitable for the folks living in that area and surrounding communities. We're located within walking distance of Baldwin Borough and Brentwood, so not only would we be helping the folks in our immediate area who are experiencing food insecurities, we'd be able to bring in revenue from outside the city into the city. I really just wanted to throw in the towel at that point, and after eight years of hard work, sacrifice, not only by myself, but by my family, and many, many, many long sleepless nights, I took to my true introvert self and shut down and opened a book. And the book I opened was given to me as a gift I received during the pandemic from a bond monk who lives in Greenfield. We were giving him produce throughout the pandemic, and he especially appreciated the peaches, which was great. When I opened the book, I saw a message he wrote to me. It said, "Jamie, may you be able to help many beings." As I read through the introduction, I came upon this quote as well. Wisdom is like the chip of a lamp on which darkness cannot abide. When we are the lamp, darkness is removed without effort. And that's what brought me back. I know now my superpowers are my big mouth, my ability to make meaningful connections, and to look at situations from a unique perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Chief Pomaay Chakman-Yahelihi.
Do you mind if I speak on the mic? I didn't think I would make it in time.
Please.
Inlekak alakaeen, everyone. The light in me honors the light in you. Happy to be here before city council in support of this Food Justice Fund and the work that you have all done in relationship to food justice in the city and the support that you have been giving the workers, the people who are actually doing this in the communities. My title is Is Pomaay Chakman-Yahalihi, and I'm the Grand Inka Chief of the Onkwe Onway Obkupu Ushwiel Uswiel. And I'm also the Grand Inka Chief Member of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And Excluding Indians Not Tax is a specific clause in the Constitution, Indians, which applies to the aborigines of this country or so-called. And American is a term that people throw around so frivolously, but it means so much to us. Because originally, the definition of American is the Aboriginal races. They apply to the copper-colored people here that was met by your ancestors and now apply to the descendants of Europeans. So I want to say food is a right for our people. It's not just based in commerce and trade, and I understand that's what city officials have to focus on. For our people, for the indigenous, the aborigines, we look at food as a part of our culture, as a part of our history, as a part of our connection to the land, the soil, the water, and the air. And so for us, in supporting the food justice work that people do in the communities, the citizens and the residents, as we are not those, we're not citizens or residents, we're actually just Aboriginal people here, we understand the importance of food forestry and how that is very significant moving forward and helping to eliminate certain issues of poverty and hunger in the communities that you all serve. And I think that after speaking with Secretary Redding, and I've known him, we've had many meetings, and we're having more future meetings at the state level to talk about food forestry and what that can look like across the region, I want you to carefully think about this as you discuss it and see the importance of food forestry, because it's a very sustainable model. I'll be doing presentations coming up in the future, and I hope you will be willing to attend those presentations to really explain how beneficial that can be for the city of Pittsburgh. And I thank you for your time. I yield.
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You will also be given three minutes to speak.
Greetings. I am an Aboriginal American matriarch. My title is Yajology Chanal-Kaeen. I'm located within the Delaware Territory, as you may call it, Pittsburgh. My statement today is to invoke my people's constitutional indigenous rights. We are the original beings, the original stewards of our ancestral lands, the Americas, including the islands, the Onkwe Onway from our great law of peace. My people are acknowledged in multiple maxims of law and documents such as the Constitution of Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and Excluding Indians Not Tax, the Undrip, the Aundrip, the House Congress Resolution 331, the 100th Second Session, the Delaware Treaty, and the list continues. The city is under the jurisdiction of the state, the state is under the jurisdiction of the city, and the city is under the jurisdiction of the government. Are you going to honor your oath to the Constitution? Are you going to continue to commit 18 U.S. Code 2381 treason, 18 U.S. Code 1091 genocide, forced assimilation, eugenics, colonization, 18 U.S. Code 242 deprivation of rights against the color, excuse me, deprivation of rights under the color of law, 18 U.S. Code 241 conspiracy against rights, and the list continues of the nefarious actions against my people, the Aboriginal Americans. Uphold your oath to the Constitution. Uphold your Ajetisca folks ancestors oath to the Constitution. Uphold your Slav ancestors oath to the Constitution. We are not to be confused with Title 25 Native Americans, who are the immigrants, foreigners, citizens, naturalized citizens, under the jurisdiction of the United States, which is a corporation, AKA a business, which is on stolen land and stolen resources of my people. Are you going to continue to walk in the footsteps of the many nefarious immigrant's ancestors, such as Walter Ashby Plecker, a physician, the first Virginia State Register of Vital Statistics from 1912 to 1946, a promoter of eugenics, a discredited movement nefariously pressuring state agencies to reclassifying my people as so-called colored. The policies agency was effectively to erase so-called Indians as an identity as it has and has made it difficult for Indians so-called to gain state, federal recognition. My people are the Aboriginal Americans. We have been reclassified as so-called blacks, so-called colors, so-called negro, and so-called African-American, and so-called Indian as well. We cannot be from two places at once. We cannot be immigrants. We cannot be foreigners, and we have never been naturalized. We never made the 10 steps of naturalization to become so-called citizens. We are not your abusers. We are actually your ancestors' saviors. And I yield.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Juwan F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. Yesterday I came, and I had a shirt for my son. But this is what I wanted you to see. See all the different shirts, and this is Gun Violence Memorial and Homer Honors the Lost. Look at all the different shirts. Mr. Kraus, look at all the different shirts of the dead people. I wanted to again say, we thank you to the Pittsburgh Police, the citizens and residents from Kevi River, Urbis. You are to be praised. Brenda Tate and Reggie Udine was also in the paper. Brenda Tate, because I was talking to someone, I said Cookie. I couldn't figure out where I got Cookie, but Cookie was our chief of police in Wilkinsburg, but it was Brenda Tate, a city policeman, ex-city policeman, that called the thing, called the thing. Also, citizens. Cornell Rest is running for president, and I believe that he is able to be a good president. He's very educated, unlike Bush, when we had, you know, he was, he graduated from college, but he had to have tutors, and they were saying that he was worried about selling weed and drugs. That's Bush, they said. Now, I want to tell you that I've been saying for years, I come down to save lives, not to destroy them. And yesterday, as I ended up going down Smithville, I ended up getting ready to go across the street, and there was a man walking beside me. He sort of passed me up, and as the light was changing, I have a thing where I'll walk with you. I think I started to say, I'll walk with you, because if they hit me, they got to hit you too. But then, out of the corner of my eye, the car was moving, and I said, hey, and snatched him back. You know, I used to be a school guard. I still got my talents. Because the man stopped, he stopped, and he said, oh, you saved my life. And then he looked, and he said, Ms. Brown, is that you? And I'm saying, who are you? It was Grant that worked with Rising Salt. I told him to come up here, because they're talking to me and treating me like I'm a dog. Come up there and tell them, I am saving lives. Like I said, I come down here to do. I want you to understand that when I talk about the police, and I told the policeman, my son taught me about you. My son, when I went, he was on B Street, and the police was, he was at the car when they left. I said, were they messing with you? And he stopped me, and he said, Mom, wait a minute, Mom. Not all cops are bad, but you got some rogues. And you do got rogues, because there, anytime, five of them walked out. See, people think, I want you to understand why my son died. He was on the floor saying, I have one lung. He was begging for his life, and they left him on the floor. The man came back and kicked my son to death. There was blood all around his spleen, but they wrote down heart attack, natural heart attack.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Miss y'all. I've been being a grandma. Real quick, we need more garbage cans in Beachview. There's five between Coast and Fallafield. Fallafield Bridge has two, so that's seven. Between Coast and Chicken Latino, there's one garbage can, and then there's one at the Monument, but we have all these food places. I volunteer, I go in my chair, and I pick up poop bags. It's kind of like when I tell my kid, put this in the garbage, not on it, not near it, put it in the garbage. People don't do that. They leave their pretty little colored scented that don't work, and I pick them up, and then I have to travel a long way and put them all in a garbage can. But city council, your rep said it's not going to happen. It's not easy. I don't know. Like many of us are, my doctor said I need to get back into the water like I did last year at Ormsby, but that's not ADA accessible. So yesterday, I decided I'm going to go by a pass. I'm going to go to the new Moore Pool. I got trapped in thorn bushes completely covering the only clear sidewalk on the right side towards West Liberty. A policeman came, used his vest, pushed back on the bushes, used his club. I had blood, little pricks of blood everywhere, all over me. Then I get to West Liberty, and there's Japanese knotweed going from there up to Pioneer. I almost fell off the curb, looked up at the city steps. Those are completely covered. I did not see one pair of city steps on my travel to Moore. I could not go up Brookline Boulevard from West Liberty on either side, both sidewalks not passable, cross through the zebra lines going over to CVS, and a 10-inch pipe had no cover on it, just waiting for a little kid's leg to go down into it. So then I head down Pioneer Avenue towards the pool. The trees have made all the cement slabs come up like little teepees and tents and steps, and going home. I was there for an hour. Wonderful pool, completely ADA accessible, but we can't get there from Beachview. Pedestrians cannot get there safely. So I went up Pioneer Avenue in the street, went all the way down to Dormont, where I'm now going to have to pay $150 for a season pass, because I can't safely get to my pool that Beachview has said we're supposed to use. Unacceptable. I don't know who owns that park, by the way, across from Rorick, where all of the thorns were that I literally got stuck in. I don't know who owns that strip.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? If not, that takes us to our Standing Committee agenda. The first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to please read Bills 1704 through 1711 altogether. I'm going to ask members to ask for a motion to approve, because I need to amend two of the bills before we hold for a public hearing.
Bill 1704, excuse me, Resolution, Amending Resolution 726 of 2022, which reappropriated federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Version 5. Bill 1705, Resolution, Amending Resolution 411 of 2022, which authorized and amended agreement or agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh for the completion of projects approved in the city of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan by decreasing the not-to-exceed amount by $1 million to $71,878,711 and by aligning project lines accordingly. Bill 1706, Resolution, Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by increasing bridge upgrades by $928,291.11, increasing capital equipment acquisition by $219,833.99, reducing complete streets by $1,500,000, reducing facility improvements, recreation in senior centers by $264,124.88, and reducing information system modernization by $35,875.12, and increasing public safety equipment by $651,876. Bill 1707, Resolution, Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by increasing capital equipment acquisitions by $569,078.55, reducing complete streets by $774,000, reducing facility improvements, recreation in senior centers by $1,566,121, reducing information systems modernization by $183,879, and increasing slope failure remediation by $1,954,921.45. Bill 1708, Resolution, Further Amending Bill 1708, Resolution, Further Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 19, 2022, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by increasing capital equipment acquisition by $907,633.37 and reducing facility improvements, recreation and senior centers by $257,633.37. Bill 1709, Resolution, Amending Resolution 525 of 2021, which authorized an amended cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh, Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $219,833.99 for a new total of $10,629,313.99. Bill 1710, Resolution, Amending Resolution 43 of 2022, which authorized a 2022 cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $569,785.55 for a new total of $13,112,813.36. And Bill Number 1711, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to commit future 2024 Pago capital funds for the local match of the Department of Transportation's raised grant in an amount not to exceed $2274,000.
Motion to approve?
Uh, second discussion.
We have discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam President. Uh, motion to then amend Bills 1704 and 1705?
Yes. Second? Thank you. Um, one is amending the actual attachment, and the other is amending the actual co-op agreement. Um, so 1704 shows you the different, the line items that are moving. 1705 shows you the actual co-op agreement, so they're companion pieces. And we're really moving dollars around. All the programs stay intact, but for accounting purposes of those dollars, we need to put them in the correct buckets. And we want to do this now so we don't then have to have a second public hearing because we're changing budget line items.
Uh, so we vote on the amendments now?
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both bills have been amended. Now we need a motion to hold all bills for a public hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All 1704 through 1711 will be held for a public hearing. Thank you. Next is Bill 1722.
Bill 1722, Resolution Directing the Department of Finance and the Law Department to Produce Deed Restrictions Relative to Affordable Housing for the Publicly Owned Property in the Eighth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Designated in the Deed Registry Office of the Allegheny County as Block and Lot 050051E0016300000, Council District Number 7.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Brief discussion?
Discussion, Councilman?
Thank you. So, um, you'll recall that when we talked about, um, our Pittsburgh land bank, that, um, I mentioned that in my district, I would be wanting the land bank to dispose, especially for those kinds of programs that are, um, in a program for affordable housing, right? So we had a long discussion about whether City Council can direct the land bank or not to a specific end buyer, like the community garden steward, who's been stewarding a garden for eight years. And there was some kind of back and forth on that. But that mainly, we want the land bank to dispose of properties in a program that council directs it to, like affordable housing. Um, and so, um, we also talked with the solicitor about how that as the owner of a property, we can add deed restrictions. Um, and so this is an effective experiment. So this parcel in Bloomfield, where a vacant lot is going for close to $200,000 on the open market, um, is owned by the City of Pittsburgh. And so we're asking the law department to put a restriction on the deed that it be used only for affordable housing, like we do in a Lytec deal, or like we do in inclusionary zoning, where there's a restriction on the deed for what can be done with the properties. Um, and then once that restriction's in place, I intend to hopefully, you know, dispose this to the land bank um, so that it can be put to that purpose. And it's been sitting there for, I'm not sure how many decades, but I could find out and let you know. So I'd love to have your support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just.
Council President?
I'm sorry. I just want to say, mention that we do have a land bank hearing on July 20 at 10:00 a.m. Uh, to discuss the tri-party agreement. And Councilwoman Gross and I are working on some amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
Was the parent, her, I guess, Councilwoman, I mean, Councilwoman Gross is the only one that can speak to the bill? So interrogatory?
Yes.
I didn't pull it up, but how's, uh, affordable housing defined and the deed restriction?
If you don't mind, Councilman, I'd be happy to bring up our solicitor, City Solicitor Chris Kubik. I believe he's in chambers.
Sure, I just didn't know the parameters were.
Yeah.
Solicitor Kubik?
I see it says 80% AMI. I'm good. I was just looking for the, yeah, I see on the bill, 80% AMI. I'm good. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Councilman Cargill?
Yes, thank you. Uh, you know, I've talked to Councilwoman Gross about this off, off-record many times, and, uh, this is great. This is what government should be doing to provide affordable housing. This doesn't cost us anything. We have all these properties. Hopefully, we can work things out with the land bank as far as how they operate. And, um, you know, I think it's a great experiment. If we count how many structures we have and we can designate them towards affordable housing, then we're doing our job and then some without taking out a $70 million loan. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Councilwoman Rossberger?
Thank you. I'm supportive of this in theory, and I know that this is something that you've been advocating for for a long time. Um, my question is, the deed restrictions, which are laudable, I don't know, because I'm not on the land bank board and I don't have them memorized. How do they match up with the land bank requirements for future, for consideration of, of sale? And what happens in either this time, in this instance, or in the future if the deed restrictions that might be put into an individual, attached to an individual property do not match up to the land bank? That's kind of my outstanding question here. Um, interrogatory or Solicitor Kubik? I don't know who can answer that best.
The solicitor may be best positioned to answer. Based on what I know of how members can send land to the land bank, members can put restrictions on the property that comes into the land bank, and the land bank would then be bound to honor those restrictions. So I, I believe, um, that the land bank would have to follow the restrictions that come with the property into the land bank.
Okay. So this, so any kind of restrictions would, would, would be it? Would be what they have to follow? Okay. I'm comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion? If none, uh, Councilwoman Warwick, sorry.
I mean, I guess just a quick question. So is, is, is the hope then that if, in a scenario that we talked about, we had a specific property that we wanted to go to a specific person, say, who was already farming on it or whatnot? Could we put that in the deed, like, could you identify a, an end buyer, so to speak, in a deed restriction?
That's a legal question. I don't believe, I don't believe we have the ability to say, I want this to go to Daniel, right? I don't think we can legally do that. We can say, this has to be for affordable housing. We can say, this has to accompany with this deed restriction. And then the land bank has to legally publicize that. And so anyone legal, then has a legal right to a bid on said property. And then there's a whole process for which that goes through. But we can't, we can say, this has to be maintained as a farm, but we can't say, it has to be a farm for Anthony. It has to be a farm for Teresa. We don't have that power.
Well, then forget it.
What about like prioritizing?
We can prioritize, yes.
So priority to someone who's been working on it for whatever.
Where the solicitor come to the table?
Solic, I'm, I've been asked to have the solicitor provide.
They're saying, we're all giving it legal opinions. I'd rather hear from the solicitor. That's all.
That's fine.
Good morning, everyone. Um, yeah, unfortunately, no, um, Councilwoman Warwick. We cannot designate, um, property directly to it. Uh, Councilwoman Lavelle was correct. So if we put on the deed restrictions on things like farming, all that kind of stuff, but then it's open for a bid at that piece, um, and, and that's the process that has to go through. And that is true whether the land bank gives it away or we give it away. Like, there's not, um, the land bank does have a, a number of standards that I think, you know, further shrink the universe of people that can get properties. But, um, but we still ultimately are responsible as a municipal corporation to make sure that we're not weighing skin for one person over another. That's really not something we can ever do.
Or should we?
I, I agree with that, too. So, all right. Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you. So, so second round. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, like, although I'm supportive of this, um, you know, this is one parcel. And, uh, you know, the big picture is to get the tri-party agreement in place so we're not just picking individual council members or picking and choosing properties. So we need to have a more comprehensive plan. And that's why the tri-party agreement being passed at City Council is the most important thing we could do, probably this year.
Thank you. Council President?
So I'm just going to say, I've never been a fan of the land bank. I'm not going to be a fan of the land bank. I am working with Councilwoman Gross to put some amendments. I think that she's always been trying to fight to keep her area more affordable. And I know you're doing some stuff, I heard yesterday, some exciting things happening in your district. So I want to thank you for your work there. But when, I don't want to make, give the impression to the public that it's council members picking and choosing, and it's just one council member. We do things as a body. And what you do, what you are doing is giving the land bank board, who's appointed generally by the mayor's office, more say. So you're giving one person the say over the land versus a body of, of at least five. So when you, when you give those impressions, I just want to be, I want to be, I want to be very clear to the public that although this mayor might do everything great with the land, you don't know who, what's going to happen down the road. So for me, when I'm cautious and a little bit anxious about the land bank, that's why. Thank you. But thank you, Councilwoman Gross. I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion? If none, I'll also just say, very supportive, Councilwoman Gross. I think this is a pretty innovative way to do things. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to our deferred papers, first being Bill 1649.
Bill 1649, Resolution, Amending Resolution 320 of 2023, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional service agreement with Sable and Sable LLC by substituting the entity of Sable and Sable LLC with that of Meyer, Unkovic, and Scott LLP for expert legal services in connection with the case in an amount not to exceed $20,000.
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Need discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1686.
Bill 1686, Resolution Approving the Use Plan for the $3 million Food Justice Fund as allocated in the City's American Rescue Plan pursuant to Resolution Number 762 of 2022.
Motion to approve with discussion, please.
Second.
Uh, and I will defer discussion and have comment in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Director Vargas, can you come to the table? I wasn't coming to.
Yep.
Morning, Director. Welcome.
Morning, Director. Do you want to state, just state your name and title for the public?
Yes, of course. Uh, Catherine Vargas, Director of Parks and Recreation for City of Pittsburgh.
So I just really want to thank you for all your work on this. Everybody's saying, what an amazing job you've done. And while you're doing this, you're juggling a million other events and, um, activities in recreation centers and senior centers and all those things with, with an amazing staff. But you've been doing it a lot without an assistant. And, um, I just want to thank you publicly for everything you've done. And I, Councilwoman Gross and I are working on some amendments before next week. And I just had a brief conversation with the mayor's office about, um, the position. My idea of the position is we have given the, the mayor in the last budget, 109 positions. And there are still some positions outstanding. And I said, let's work with him on using one of those positions for this position so that we're not adding more to the budget. And I think that makes sense. We've, we've given a lot of, a lot of positions, and some of those are still unfilled. And I think, um, Councilwoman Gross, uh, when I talk to Director Pollock, he's open to the discussion. So I think that, we'll at least have that discussion over the next week. And so before next week, we'll have some type of amendment on how that should be handled. Um, with that said, I think that overall, um, I want to thank the Food Justice Fund people for coming to the table. And I want to thank all the council members. Um, I say this time and time again, we don't do this as one or two or three people. We do this as a body. And if it weren't for everyone here, this fund would not even be in place. Um, it started a long time ago during the pandemic. We started putting legislation in about, um, for farming and, and different things. And Councilman Cargill and Councilwoman Gross started doing some additional things. Every member here did something in terms of food justice. But I do want to be very clear, this cannot be the only way this is funded for the future. We've got to get some funding for these types of programs from our business communities, from other people across this, across the region. Um, our budget director cringes every time I say, we want to do a grant because that's really not what we're, we're here to fund paving and demo of homes that are falling down and dilapidated, taking care of properties. And police and trash and all those things that also affect quality of life for people. And then while we're doing that, let's count on our partners to help us fund these programs in a way that they really should be funded. And most importantly, let's fund something that gets food into the homes of people. So with that said, I just want to thank you all for your work and thank council as a body, um, for their work and, and the Food Justice Fund folks. I'm supportive today, and we'll vote to amendments next week.
Thank you. Councilman Cargill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to start by thanking all the food groups. When you come down, and I see your passion, and I see the interest. And I know, I know this money is going to go to good use. I really do. Um, I myself have a passion now. And through my work with Councilwoman Gross and the city farms, you know, um, concept, I don't know, maybe, I don't know quite what to call it. But, but, you know, so I've developed a passion myself. I've got an orchard growing. I'm watching these trees grow up to be, you know, so, and.
He makes his own wine.
Yeah, yeah. Well, someday, yeah. We're going to need some stompers if you're interested. But, 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 you know, and, and for the cause, of course. You know, we're feeding people, right? And, and teaching people how, how to eat. It's just all good. So we're all in the same area, which I've learned to love. And, and I really have seen the passion of the gardeners, whether it's in Councilwoman's district or, or my district. People are very passionate about it. So it's easy to get people involved and, and, you know, just kind of fired up to do good things about it. And I'm, count me as one of those people. Sorry if I was a little overzealous trying to get one of our projects funded or get some of this money appointed. I was, I think I recommended or suggested. Um, but I love the passion you bring for your own projects. And I just ask that same passion, when, and, and I want you to be, I want, I want to educate you on what we're doing through the city. I mean, we have a lot of infrastructure already in place, in large thanks to, uh, our Director Vargas here. You know, we have a full-time employee, we have funding, we have a lot of things dedicated to this effort. So I think if we get together, we could do some really great things. So I'm an enthusiastic supporter today. And, you know, I wish you all the best, and I feel like you'll spend this money wisely. So I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge all of the hard work that so many members of the community who are here in chambers with us, um, and, um, council members and members of the administration have had many, many meetings all together and lots of discussions to get us to today. And it's been a couple of years' work. I'm pretty sure that I first started having this conversation the summer of 2021, um, when we were first getting the American Rescue Plan funds. And I just want to acknowledge, um, I don't think I can add[1739.29]
And I just want to acknowledge, um, I don't think I can add to the stories that we've heard in public testimony at the public hearing or a public comment here today and other days of council that, of the kind of hard work and sweat equity that people are putting into solving food injustice in the city, um, either through growing food or producing and processing food or distributing food. And we know, and I've said this many times, that of the people who are below the poverty line in the city of Pittsburgh, um, or even below the kind of new, um, metric that I think is called ALIS, and I can't remember the ac, what all the acronym stands for, um, that in the city, the people who are struggling are 70% are female-headed households with children in the home. So we are talking about our kids here, and I think it is a legitimate investment. And sure, the majority of our budget goes to the kinds of nuts and bolts operations that keep the city running on a daily basis, and it goes to infrastructure. But we make investments in community development, and we make investments in economic development. And I don't see how any of the things that we would be doing here are exclusive of economic and community development. I think it's fundamental that we help our neighborhoods, our citizens, and our kids thrive. So I'm really excited about the potential. Um, and I'm so grateful to the administration, the entire Gady administration, for being willing to kind of start on day one, um, and having done so much great preparation. And I really want to thank Director Vargas especially, who put in so much of the heavy lifting, um, and to get us ready to get started right away. So thank you to my colleagues, and I'm really excited to see what we build with this fund. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you very much. Good morning, Director.
Good morning.
Yeah, yeah, I would like to give you the opportunity to, uh, to, uh, make a presentation and, or add comment, as you see.
Sure, thank you so much. First, I, um, I just want to, um, say that I appreciate all of the people in the community that have been part of this with me, um, and all the council, um, for being supportive of us moving forward with the Food Justice Plan. You know, a couple of things I'd like to point out about the plan that I think are particularly exciting. One, uh, it sort of, um, uh, allows us to, to do two things, um, about approximately half the, the money would go towards what would be considered grassroots, community-led projects, while the other half actually goes towards, um, thinking through system-level investments in our food justice, you know, in our food system, how we can make a transformative change with a heavy investment. I also want to say that, um, recognizing, uh, to what Council President said about this being, um, you know, not the full fund, um, we have had robust conversation around how, um, this really kind of sparks and establishes, uh, the work, but that typical of other funds in other cities as well, you know, that public investment transforms into pu, into, um, dollars that come from the philanthropy community and others who get involved in the work. And, you know, if you look at, um, other cities, that has actually made that transition. So that's absolutely, um, something that, you know, would, um, be important to this sort of sustainability of this particular fund. And I'll just also mention that there is a, a portion of the fund that is, that involves, uh, the capacity to run it well, um, you know, recognizing that with ARPA dollars, we are on a pretty tight timeframe, so we've got two years to allocate, four years to spend. And that's, you know, that's why that the capacity conversation is so important, because, you know, our ability to, to, um, to do this well and to focus on it, and it kind of shows like the level of investment that we have as a city to move this work forward, um, the capacity is just as important to that. So I'm excited about this. I've learned a lot about this topic. While the City Parks Department has always supported food issues, we've been more on the, um, the charitable giving side of food, um, with our Food Programs Office. So this has been, um, a bit of a new topic for me, but, um, one that I am extremely energized around. I feel, um, really excited and, um, appreciative of the support that council has, and I'm ready to, to move forward and, and see some good things happen here. Um, and again, um, something that I hope that the rest of the Pittsburgh community can get behind, uh, so that we do have a fund in the future that is sustained by multiple partners who are investing in this work. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Of course, no, thank you. So I'm curious, this might be a, I don't know, maybe an unfair question or a little bit too far out there, but I'm just curious, with your expertise and experience, uh, if you could imagine for us what your thoughts are about, um, the, the future of the food system on a local level? What, where, where, where do you see us, where do you see us going, and where do you see our role as working with, uh, larger providers, if you will, to understand more inherently their responsibility to be more global in their, in their outreach?
Yeah, so, um, you know, the, the part of the work that is around, um, putting larger dollar investments in Pittsburgh's food system improvements, um, you know, one thing that I've definitely learned is that the food system, there's everything from, you know, growing food, producing food, getting food to people, consuming food. The system, um, has all of those pieces to it. And, uh, in the plan, we talk about, um, we haven't necessarily picked out like what those two investments would look like specifically, because we do want to continue to make this part of a community dialogue. But there are absolutely opportunities in Pitt, in the city. The city already does some really great work, um, you know, an example would be, um, uh, the Adopt-A-Lot program, which does provide folks with access to start to grow food. But there's, um, imperfections within all of that. So building on something that is existing, or, um, I know we've talked a lot about the, uh, the, uh, like, not just the growing piece, but also the, um, being able to kind of get food access to communities. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity in there, um, but it's purposely not defined in the plan yet, because we wanted to be able to have a more robust community dialogue around what those, um, those two kind of big issues could be.
I have visions for the future, Councilman.
Or we could, we could talk for days, I'm sure. I just, I would like to have a better, um, understanding of, uh, of the responsibility of, of the, the biggest among us to provide for the least among us, right? And this, this, uh, continuation of the consolidation, uh, and moving more to perimeters of cities and not understanding the obligation for the heart and soul of that area, and, and, and the, the obligation that, that they have to provide, because they have such great capacity that, and, and the reason I bring that up is that in the, you know, sort of towards the beginning to the middle of global pandemic, we were having really good conversations with large-scale providers of how they could understand more so their responsibility to service, uh, you know, historically, or at least as of late historically underserved areas of the city. And there, there were some really good conversations taking place, but they never took root. And, um, uh, and that, that saddens me. I, I thought it was a, a sort of a, a restart moment, but it didn't turn out to be so.
Yeah, and I'll just also mention that, um, during the pandemic, I think it also, it showed the strength and also the opportunities in our, um, more charitable, uh, kind of giving of, of food. We worked with a number of large partners to make sure we could get more food out the, the door to people. I think one of the things that I've been learning is that there is also the economic driver part of the food system, um, you know, especially since we run farmers markets now, which is another kind of new thing under my plate. You know, seeing the, the value of connecting local growing to getting that into the hands of individuals who, um, otherwise might not get fresh fruit and produce right in their community. We also work with Just Harvest to make sure that that happens, um, with, um, you know, utilizing, um, the, um, uh, SNAP benefits at the farmer's market. So all of those things play a role in making sure that it's not ju, it's both getting as much food to families that need them and communities that need it, and then also driving an economic, um, uh, sustainable system around the, the food system that allows people to really be empowered to be part of that. Um, and connecting those in, in a local way, where, um, really, communities can kind of drive their own, um, their own access to, to fresh fruits and vegetables.
The longer I'm here, the more I understand the wisdom of, uh, things are not either or, they're always and both, and the, and that there's always room for multiple avenues, you know, of solution. So I appreciate everything that you've done. I appreciate the council, too, and I appreciate you being here, uh, this morning, and everyone who came out to speak and, uh, and to petition the council's approval. And I'm sure we'll have the vote today, and I'll certainly be voting in the affirmative. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Second round, Councilman Coghill?
Okay, thank you. So, Director Vargas, I just want to say to you...
Oh, dear God.
What was that? What about the ducks?
Darlene, Darlene Harris.
That's woman Harris.
I wasn't wrong for that. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so anyway, I, I really just want to thank you for your, your openness and your willingness to, um, have myself and Councilwoman Gross sit down with your hires as far as the food program goes and city farms and things of that nature. And I think you're probably finding out, that I found out, the energy in this space is really great. You know, we're not short of people who want to be involved and are passionate about it. So that's what makes it really so, so good, I think. But, uh, but no, I just wanted to thank you for, you know, always lending us your ear and being involved and jumping right in with us, I felt. So I really appreciate that, and we're, we're working on that chuck for you, okay? Which I think you desperately need. And, um, at the same time, I want to make sure that if we have any trouble spending this money, I have a two-acre farm. I don't know if I mentioned that, that we could throw this behind, all right? So, so you're all invited. We're all gonna go there, okay? We're gonna go there again. Most of us have been there already, so, uh, okay. But no, thanks. I, I just want to really thank you for your work.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'm just gonna say, I'm ready to fund Councilman Coghill's farm.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation?
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
That moves us to our new papers, first being Bill 1687.
Bill 1687, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Precise Discovery in an Amount Not to Exceed $5,401.18 for Professional Services Related to Electronic Document Storage.
A motion to approve. Whose committee are we on? Am I stepping on somebody's nose? Okay. Motion to approve, please.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1697.
Bill 1697, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 855 of 2011, effective December 29, 2011, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2011 Capital Budget and the 2011 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2011 Through 2016 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing District 6 Neighborhood Needs by $77,662.79 and Increasing Housing Development by $77,662.79."
Motion to approve, please.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to our invoices. Need a motion to approve?
A motion to approve, but with discussion, please.
I want to delete, um...
And I'll defer to the Council President.
Second.
Thank you. Madam President?
I want to delete the ones for the $5,000 donations. It's, um, Trinity AME, Hope for Tomorrow, Save a Life Today, Westwood Oakwood. We're gonna do that in a different form.
Yep.
Okay? Motion to delete.
And I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those four have been deleted.
Can I just say real briefly, this is our grant funding that we have been talking about. Council has all this funding to allocate. We're trying to work with the administration on a, giving them the CDBG funding while we used this type of funding, but it's not been decided how we should distribute these funds. But what I will say is if we don't find a way before break to distribute these funds, we will start taking the CDBG money and other funds back to city council, so that we have funds that we can allocate. So we'll give a timeframe. Thank you.
Now I need a motion to waive the rules. We have EMS bill that we need to pay, and it's because, it's over the 5,000 threshold because Taylor Swift added a second concert.
Motion to waive rules, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The rules have been waived. All those in favor approving the invoices say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Invoices have been approved.
Are we paying that? What did you say it was for?
EMS bill.
The EMS bill. Do we pay for that, or do they pay for it?
It's both. Yeah.
I just want to know, because we charge people locally for stuff, so I just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you. Somebody asked, asked me that yesterday.
Need a motion to approve the P cards.
Assumed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Kraus. Our first new paper is Bill 1683.
Bill 1683, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Works on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Center for Employment Opportunities to Grant a License to Enter Onto Certain City-Owned Parcels for the Purpose of Performing Certain Work, Including Maintenance and Beautification Services That Fall Outside the Regular Work Assigned to City Employees at No Cost to the City.
Proof, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1684.
Bill 1684, Resolution Amending Resolution 194 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Authorize the Pennsylvania Resources Council, Providing Electronic Waste Collection and Recycling Services for City Residents by Adding an Additional One Year for an Amount Not to Exceed $175,000.
Motion to approve with discussion, please. Director, will you come up, please? Good morning, how are you? Director Pollak, do you want to join this conversation?
This isn't even with the conversation, he just came in.
No, it's, uh, it's the importance of electronic waste recycling. And so, and this really was the, the birth thing of, you know, the idea by Council President Smith. Huge, huge, huge supporter of our responsibility to, uh, responsibly recycle electronic waste. And so, big supporter of this. I'd just really like to hear your thoughts about it and how we can do this better, and I have some ideas, too.
Oh, absolutely. Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works. You know, so this program, um, provides us access to a vendor who takes the waste, um, which...
Is that e-cycle by any mean, by any, yeah, no, it's PRC, Pennsylvania Resource Council.
Yes. You know, in accordance with state law, um, the drop-off point is down in the Strip District. It's subsidized by residents, subsidized to residents, um, based on weight and material. So it's very popular. As also part of this service that they provide, they also do some community outreach. So they do go into neighborhoods, um, to try to gather materials, they do set up events for us. So we find it, I like, successful. I'd love to, um, have more discussions about how we can expand the offerings and programming because I think it's a, a critical service to the benefit of citizens that we responsibly remove this waste from our city.
Yeah. Director? Thoughts?
I don't have much to add, other than I, I agree, um, with what's been already stated about the importance of providing this service. And I'll, I'll just note, um, as, uh, I have the pleasure to sit on the Executive Committee of Connect, the Congress of Neighborhood Municipalities, and, um, a constant topic of conversation at that table, which includes the city, but also some of our, um, inner rings suburban municipality neighbors, um, is around, um, waste management and the fact that, um, you know, Pittsburgh is, is unique in operating our own, um, Environmental Services Bureau and offering these kinds of services in a way that others have struggled mightily in recent years, those who contract that out to, um, private providers, and reducing the types of, um, materials that can be recycled. Most of them don't collect glass, um, for recycling anymore. We, of course, still do. And, um, and many of them are experiencing runaway costs in that space, whereas we've certainly incurred cost increases as the cost of operating our bureau has gone up, but nothing in, close to comparable to what they're experiencing with those contracts. So I think that, I bring that up just as a bigger-picture way to say that, um, uh, the way in which we operate and manage our own, um, environmental services, um, offering to city residents is, is really highly valuable. I give a great deal of credit to Director Hornstein and Superintendent Weigel for, for doing that. And while not, while this, this engagement with, um, the Pennsylvania Resources Council is, is not something that we fully manage in-house, it's something we can do because we operate this part of our, um, basic services ourselves rather than contracting it out. So I'm excited about this renewal and, um, excited in general, um, in the ways in which[1704.21] in the ways in which we're able to meet city residents' needs with our, our environmental services program.
I have a litany of questions, and I don't think there are any order of importance. There are just lots of ideas that are bouncing around in, uh, in my head. Um, in terms of our own responsibility as the city, uh, how, how do we ensure that we're managing and recycling our electronic waste as we reinvent, you know, our, you know, the needs for our different digital devices and those kinds of things? Do we have a, we have a, a, a sound system in place by which we do that?
I think we have a sound system in place. I mean, that system can always be improved, but I believe I N P does collections, um, for e-recycling, which we pick up and we take to our vendor, um, and process through that, that channel. If you're talking about, like, internal electronics...
Yeah.
Then yes, that, that is the process by which we...
As the years go on, we'll only become more and more dependent on whatever those devices are. I suspect those devices will become smaller and less impactful over the years, which I guess there's some advantage to that. Um, uh, another thing that comes to mind, and not to minimize this in any way, but most of us, if not all of us, have wrestled with TVs being tossed on the sidewalk and, uh, having to come out and pick them up. It seems to be like we're coming to the end of those big old monster TVs, that they have finally kind of cycled out and we, I, I, it's been quite a while since I've got a call to say, oh, you know, there's this huge TV over hillside, can we get it up? Do you, do you, do you see that as a trend that's, that has finally come to an end?
I mean, I can't confirm that it's come to the end. Uh, I think anecdotally in conversations with my staff, it seems to be that, like you mentioned, less, less TVs are getting picked up. Um, I would like to attribute it to our program, but I don't think I can necessarily do that fairly.
A combination of, of, you know, a, a, a bunch of different things happening all at the same time. I hope there's a level of increased understanding of individual responsibility to manage, you know, our waste, especially electronic waste, which oftentimes contains mercury, which then can, you know, certainly, you know, do, uh, do greater harm. There's a, there's a, I'm gonna plug another, you know, entity, uh, that's on the South Side called E-Cycle, Twenty-Fourth and, um, Mary Street. And they're, they're just amazing there. They're, they're so cooperative. Uh, and anytime I have a, a question about, is this possibly recyclable in some way? Uh, I'll run by, and nine times out of ten, they're like, yeah, absolutely, we'll accept that, we'll take it and, and we'll recycle it, uh, regardless of, you know, of what that may be. Um, so, uh, beyond that, uh, are we, and I hate to take this too far off, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'll, I'll keep it tailored, but in terms of other hard-to-recycle waste, paint, uh, those kinds of things, uh, how, how are we set systematically here in the city to, I know we do collections of those, and I believe there's a cost associated, a minor cost associated, but could you talk a little bit about those kinds of items and what we do to, to, to help recycle that as well?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I mean, those, this contract actually covers those, all of those items.
It does the hard-to-recycle as well?
Yes. It will cover the paint, it will cover, um, the things that are not, not necessarily electronic, but that are still regulated by the state. Um, and so we do those in the same manner. Um, you know, we will have events in the community, we will, there is the drop-off site located down in the Strip District. Um, it does come with a nominal fee by weight, um, but I think it's pretty reasonable. Um, it makes it pretty accessible for folks.
And, and, and do you have a sense that we, we are using it as a community? People, people are aware and...
Oh, absolutely. We can, um, if you'd like, offline, I can certainly, um, get you current statistics on how much has been collected, um, of the various types of waste that they, they serve.
Yeah. Yeah, that would, and, and Director, in terms of city channel and those kinds of things, uh, can we better use that resource to, to palmitate what we do to, to make it easy for people to, to manage waste?
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's a, a great idea, and, and certainly something that, um, we could, we could, um, uh, do a broader push around. Uh, in fact, it might be very timely with the renewal of, of this engagement, should it be approved, that that would be a great time to, to do another round of communication broadly across all kind of, kinds of platforms, um, to share that information. Certainly, I know that, uh, information about this offering is, uh, sent out to city residents annually with the, uh, the environmental services sort of schedule, right? So when we, in the same way in which we tell people about when to put their garbage out and when they're recycling and when the, um, you know, bulk yard waste collections will occur. Information about, uh, if, if not all the events, 'cause they might not be scheduled at that time. Certainly, the Strip District location is shared there, but we can absolutely, um, make sure that that's disseminated again this summer. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, just one last question. Um, you know, I, my, uh, trash goes out Wednesday for Thursday. I love when I come out on Thursday and I just see hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of blue bins out there that people are understanding their responsibility to recycle. Has the fact that we distributed, uh, containers, do you have a sense that that has increased the amount of recyclables that we are collecting? I'm just curious.
Without question.
Yeah.
Without question. We're definitely recycling more and more materials by providing residents with those cans. Um, a pretty substantial amount as well.
That's really encouraging to hear. Uh, no, please, go ahead.
How, how close are we to, I know it's been a long and ongoing process to distribute the bins, or are we, I think we're honing in on, on everyone having one at this point, correct?
That, that's correct, yeah. I mean, we do have some outstanding neighborhoods that are waiting their cans. It has to do with, um, you know, a hiccup in the manufacturing process. We're working with the vendor on that. Um, but we're very, very close. I wanna say we're like ninety-five percent of residents are covered in terms of having a recycling can, and it is having a significant impact on the amount of recycling that we're collecting.
People are using them. People are u- using them. So I, I don't wanna end this on a, on a downer by any means, but, um, uh, I'm, I'm just curious, uh, being that we are doing everything that we can do to make certain that we are collecting our recyclables in a responsible manner, what's the market look like out there? Is it, do we, you know, are they being purchased? Do we, is there, is there a market for the recyclables that we're collecting? Do you feel good about it?
Um, I, you know, I probably would want, um, Superintendent Weigel to comment on that. Uh, he's more, more closely, uh, he's closer to that. I know that the market fluctuates. Um, some of those depend on the situation, uh, relationships with, um, China and other nations, um, in terms of who's processing it and what. Um, so I'm not, I'm just not as familiar with that marketplace. I know, know, I do know that it fluctuates, um, but I do know that they also take a lot of the materials that we collect.
You know, there's, there's a, a documentary on PBS, and you can simply get it online by going to PBS called Plastic Wars. I don't know if you've ever witnessed it, but it will completely change your, uh, your thought process around our personal responsibility to manage our waste. It's just staggering the amount of plastic that we have polluted this planet with.
And, and yet nonetheless, the, the, um, most important thing for the average citizen or resident to do is separate their own waste stream and recycle, and then why, that's why it's so important that the distribution of the bins is critical and, um, and that folks utilize them and that we continue to offer that service. It is, it is true, unfortunately, that as you work your way up kind of the stream in that market, there are sometimes points in which it breaks down, but, um, uh, that doesn't change the fact that as an individual or a consumer, that it would all, it would automatically end up in a landfill without question if you didn't separate it yourself.
Yeah.
So the thing you could do that, as an individual, anyone watching or member of the public, is, is to utilize the recycling services we have. We know that that's, um, again, it's not a hundred percent efficient process once we get into the international market for materials, but that, um, you're guaranteeing that, um, none of your waste will be properly treated if you don't separate it yourself. So that's a really important thing that folks can take away from this conversation.
There's a wonderful spiritual teacher named Louise Hay. Louise Hay says, heal yourself, heal the world. It's just all about our personal responsibility, what we do at that moment in time to ensure that we are doing what we are responsible to do. So good conversation. I really appreciate you coming here to, uh, to share. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I was next. I said second with discussion.
Madam President. Followed by Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Wilson, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanna first thank you for, for doing this. This is, it, it is something that's really been an interest to me for a long time, and it's something I actually did with, um, Dan Gilman when he was here, and they came up with that other program, but that didn't work, right? That, that one program. And so this is why we're going with this company now. Is that correct?
That, that's correct, yes. That, um, the previous provider of the service, um, unfortunately, um, had financial struggles.
Is that what it was? I knew there was something. I didn't know what it was. I wasn't even sure how they were selected, but, um, but I just do wanna say that I think that overall we need to do a little bit, um, a few other things. Like, I would like to see us incentivize businesses to stop using styrofoam and plastics and things like that, and for businesses that are willing to work with us to do some incentives. Um, but I also think that it'd be great to have dumpsters like in the communities and the cl- the collections more often than, you know, once or twice a year, because you see some of the neighborhoods, you know, during, you know, that we've removed, like, from Sheridan, hundreds of tons of debris, more than once a, more than once a year. But I think if people had a place to take it, they would take it. One of the things they do is there's a group of people called the Sheridan Neighbors, and they do, um, all the cleanups and stuff. They, not only them, but they do all of the cleanups and a lot of the organizing around, um, the cleanups. They started a program with kids, where kids, um, paint gar- trashcans, and then somebody adopts the trashcans from the community, and then they, they collect garbage, you know, all over the area to try to minimize what's happening on the hillside. Because the hill, because when people are throwing TVs on the hillside and other things, it also create, it could cause landslides, which is another issue that we're struggling with in our area. So I just think it's the domino effect of, just let's get it up and on, give them a good way to get rid of it first. When I go to my mother, she lives in Scott Township now, she used to live on Fifth Avenue, when I, when I go there, it looks like so clean, the whole way, and it's trash day. I mean, you just cannot even believe it's trash day. But they have vehicles that, yeah, have an arm, they still have two drivers, so they're not minimizing any jobs. And I, kudos to our D P W, to our, our, um, employees that are doing the trash collection across the city, because they helped us through the pandemic and through some very difficult times when nobody else wanted to be out there. They were doing the job, and I, so I just wanna say we are really fortunate to have the amazing crews that we have. But I think that would be helpful to give them the tools that they need. It'd be great to have one of the trucks that picks the trashcans up and dumps it in. It would be great to have, and the city, I mean, there's nothing left after that. There's nothing left behind. The streets, I mean, are perfectly clean. But what I always keep advocating for is they used to have a hooky man, who used to come behind and clean up the trash, after the trash man. And so it shouldn't be that because neighborhoods, um, have rental properties or abandoned properties, that trash is just left in alleyways or whatever for us to clean up hundreds of tons of debris. We should have some way to help clean up that stuff that's, that's on the, talking about trash, I didn't watch Chris Potter. What is that? Anyway, I just wanna say, um, I just think that we, I would love to be able to give you more tools and more help, but this is one of those things. Those tr- those trucks are so expensive, and it would be great to get somebody to help us get, make the initial purchases, and then continue to keep our trash collection in the public, um, control so that, that never becomes privatized. But it'd be great to have the help getting to a place where we can do a better job for the public. That's all I'll say. But thank you for all that you do.
If I could just address the last question first. I, I think that, um, there's, there's no one around this table or, or in this building who has any intention of, of outsourcing that work, and we're very proud to have that as an internal function of city government. And I think, for reasons I mentioned earlier, it has great value to the resident that it is something that the city provides. I don't know if you wanna talk about the, the equipment question there, that, that's not necessarily as easy to implement in a urban environment as it is in suburban communities, but Director, if you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, certainly something we're always exploring, um, new technologies that relates to our vehicles and how we can, like, improve efficiency in the collection and, and improve the safety for our employees who are out in the street, and it's extremely dangerous job. I don't think people really realize quite how dangerous it is. Um, so I give our employees, um, who are working environmental services, doing collection every day, a lot of credit.
Yeah, and Sean's amazing, too, I should say that.
Yeah, and they are, um, you know, just to remind folks, I mean, they're out there, you know, rain, shine, snow, um, you know, collecting everyone's trash for the benefit of the public. Um, and that does, um, you know, it takes a toll and it takes a wear. Um, so we're extremely appreciative of their efforts. Um, you know, the difficulty with the, the vehicle with the arm, um, has to do with, in a lot of city neighborhoods, um, narrowness of the street along with on, on-street parking. Um, it just makes it, you know, impractical, if not impossible, to guarantee that we could...
Are there some streets that they could, that would make sense of?
Yeah, there, there are some streets that could make sense, which is why we're always kind of exploring, um, our different alternatives on how we can do collection. Um, but, but certainly, um, majority of the streets with on-street parking make it almost impossible to utilize that citywide.
Can I ask you what it would take for us to do the dumpster collections? Um, if we wanted to do one per neighborhood, you know, ninety neighbor, if we wanted to do one per neighborhood a year, what would that take? What would the cost be? Could you, do you have any idea what that would be?
I'm, I'm sure we could figure it out. It's probably something that, you know, depending on what we're trying to collect, if we're trying to collect regular recyclables, it would be much, much cheaper, but if we're trying to collect, um, these hazardous waste materials, I, you know, I think we can certainly look at that. I think we do regional community collection efforts where we try to...
Yeah, we do, but it's difficult for people to always get to them. So I just think, but it'd be better to just keep things off the hillsides and...
I completely agree.
Eventually, I think it's, it's probably less costly to just put the dumpster there than it is to continue to send crews and trucks and to clean up hundreds of tons of debris. Um, I think it might just, I, I'm, I'm curious what the, the difference might be. So I just wanna ask you to please look into that, 'cause that, and having somebody going behind the vehicles to clean them up until we get to figure out a way to make this a little bit better for the public, because I think we do an amazing job, and I do wanna say we do an amazing job with the taxes that we have. And the boroughs, they also pay for their, you know, um, collections. And so my daughter lives in the North Hills, and they just had theirs increased again, and every time I turn around, it seems like they're getting some increase for some services that we take so for granted here in the city of Pittsburgh.
I've heard of some municipalities that are coming to the end of a five-year contract where the cost is doubling this year.
Yeah. My daughters, it was really hot. I said, I feel so bad for, I'm thinking, I said, the first time I ever sent her, maybe she should move back to the city.
I have trouble believing it's the first time you've said that to her, but I understand your point.
No, it is, because I like the schools that, where they go to school in the, in the North Hills. So I like their schools. My family's in, you know, well, my sister and daughter in North Hills and North Allegheny School Districts, and it's amazing what you see them doing, uh, for the kids there. And it ma- it actually makes me sad sometimes for what our kids don't have sometimes. So, all right, but that's, I'm gonna shut up right now before I start getting more letters and stuff. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, appreciate it. I think a lot of members have covered a lot, um, on the topic, but I just wanted to come back to the question of the kind of heavy metals that we're now concerned about, right, increasingly in electronics, and maybe expand a little bit about that. So it's not just that the TV of old, when it was a tube TV, it didn't have the kind of rare earth minerals in it, and it was just, you know, garbage on the hillside, which was bad. Um, but now that there's, there's really actually very dangerous contamination, um, that leaches from electronics. And so can you speak a little bit about, briefly, I know we've gone on for a long time, about this specific way that we're recycling it? And, um, maybe touch a little bit about kind of like what the vendors that P R C is using and how they're being handled safely?
Well, I, you know, we, we rely on P R C to, um, collect the materials and to work with, um, permanent entities by the state and the, and the federal government, um, depending on the waste stream. Um, so everyone that they utilize, um, in terms of their recycling effort, will be, you know, certified to handle that waste and will responsibly do that in accordance with state law and federal laws as, as applicable to the waste stream. Um, and so really, it is for us like the absolutely like most responsible way. It's not something that we could do internally. It's not something that, um, it would be, you know, there's just not that many people that actually perform that service as of yet in terms of the electronic waste recycling. And, uh, to your point, um, extremely important because, uh, the newer devices, the newer technology over the last two decades, um, a lot of rare earth minerals, um, are part of those, not naturally found, um, you know, not things that you really want in, um, your soil or in your water supply.
Extremely toxic, carcinogenic, you know, lithium, cadmium, mercury, lead, um, and that are part of the kind of new battery-powered electrification, and it's problematic, right? And so we know, I've done a little bit of reading this, there are new mines that are nationally mining, and even nationally mining for these minerals. It's creating an entire new extractive economy that is bad for the planet in itself. And then I believe that the federal government is starting to provide some funding for the recovery of those minerals from our recycled electronic waste, right?
So I was gonna make a similar point, Council President. By their name, rare earth minimal, minerals, they are by definition also very rare, right? And so when they, in addition to being, um, extremely, uh, concerning environmental risks if they find their way into the waste stream improperly, uh, the environmental impacts of extracting them are very high. And so it's, it's critical, right, that they be, to the greatest extent possible, recycled rather than disposed of, so that we can globally minimize, to the extent possible, the amount of additional extraction that's necessary to meet demand, right? So for every, um, you know, phone with a lithium battery, um, that is no longer usable, but where that lithium can be reused in the creation of a new battery, uh, we don't have to mine that, we, humanity doesn't have to mine that amount of lithium, right? So it's, it's important to recycle it in order to keep it out of our water and our soil, and it's also important to ensure that we're not, um, to the extent possible, increasing the amount of it that we're mining here or, or elsewhere in the globe.
Thank you, Director. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Appreciate it. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, um, recently cleaned out a family member's home and, and had the experience of finding a lot of different stuff. What's that? Yeah. Missed the joke. I'm sitting here, don't know what's going on. Uh, so I'm gonna continue. So the, um, yeah, so i- in that experience, there was, um, a bunch of this stuff that's, I'm looking at the website right now for the household, uh, chemical recycling for the city of Pittsburgh residents. That's what we're talking about. So you're looking to expand the program?
A continuation.
Okay, so that'll continue on a bi-monthly basis?
Yes.
Yeah, I found a very, like, I have it, I'm just, I have it just hanging out in the, in the basement of that house.
Previously.
And, and there's multiple different, um, you know, I got in touch with, um, uh, P R C, and there's a bunch of different events that they have. and there's a bunch of different events that they have. Like Monroeville, the next one, it's on the nineteenth, I think. So I can probably round it off and take it there.
But it'd be a short, it'd be a shorter drive to bring it down to Railroad Street in the Strip District.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. So explain, like, there is a daily option to do this?
Yeah.
Because I'm just not seeing that, I'm not seeing that available as an option.
If it's not on our website, then we should look at that and maybe we should recorrect that. So we have the correct information up there. Yes, there are times, I believe it's between Saturdays on between eleven and two, for daily drop-off down at the recycling center.
Saturday's eleven to two.
Yes, I believe so.
And that's for like anything that's on this?
Correct.
Paints, pesticides, flammable, mercury?
That's correct.
Car extinguishers?
That's correct, yeah. The whole, they'll take, they'll take anything, they'll weigh, they'll weigh them, be the way that you can pay the fee there. Yes.
Interesting. Well, let's follow up on that. Because I was talking with some, some staff about that too.
Yeah, I, I do know that the schedule for those times was on the annual mailer around waste management that went to all city residents. If, if there's something that needs to be updated on the website, we can address that.
Are the prices the same?
The same.
The same as like one of those bi-monthly events versus just taking it down?
Yes.
On Saturday, Saturday, one day, Saturday?
Yeah.
Eleven to two, yeah. Okay, and then, so I'm just not educated enough to know where this falls into. Maybe Sean won't let us answer this, but there was some other stuff in the basement that I couldn't figure out. So for instance, one was a cordless lawnmower. How does someone appropriately recycle that, since it's just a general thing that's gonna keep coming up?
Cordless electric lawnmower?
I'm curious. I think a lot of the people are curious too.
I, I believe that if it's, you know, a battery-powered device, then it ultimately could be recycled through this program. I'm not exactly, I mean, that's a particular category among the list of, of devices that I'm not sure which of the rates it would, you know, equate to when they weighed it, but, but...
At least the battery.
It's a battery-powered device, then that, that is, could be recycled. It's possible that if the battery is detachable, that the battery could be recycled there and the remaining piece of equipment could be part of bulk pickup. Like you could potentially put that at the curb, but it, it depends. I can't give you a definitive answer on that without knowing the specifications of it.
Just curious. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, so I mean, I'm kind of going along the same lines. So I dropped off something a while ago, printer or something. And I, I remember I had to make an appointment and go down to the Strip. Is that still the case?
We'll need to speak with staff to confirm that.
And what, what percentage of the program kind of depends on, on these fees that residents are paying when they, when they drop something off? I mean, like, is that, would that, you see what I'm, you see what I'm asking? Like in terms of like what this costs us, how much of that is being covered by the fees?
I don't have that off the top of my head. Gosh, I wouldn't say it was like fifty percent is covered by the city and fifty percent is the responsibility of the resident.
It's somewhat significant.
It's pretty significant what the city subsidizes to support.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm asking because, I mean, I think it's sort of obvious, right? Is, yes, if you're a conscientious person, you know, I mean, as we can see like with the blue bins, on a mass scale, if you really want to effectively, you, you make it easy and you make it. And I mean, I would even say, sort of thinking back to the days when we all started recycling cans like a million years ago, if you actually pay people to do it, then you really get people recycling it, right? Like you actually have, so, I mean, if there was a way to kind of flip it where we were actually, because, you know, when you have something, for example, all the way in the Strip District and you have communities, people don't have vehicles, you know, even, even having events from time to time obviously makes, I, I mean, I know that it's, that's something that we'd like to do, I'm sure. But any way to kind of move in that direction, even if there was some like in-income-based, I mean, I, I feel like if you were paying people to... I mean, I'm thinking like, I mean, I just cleaned out my basement. I mean, we're talking, I mean, think of like how many cellphone, you know, a family with a few kids. I mean, how many cellphones do you have? And it's just, I mean, to toss a cellphone in the garbage is so easy, you know, it's so easy. So if you were paying people to, to actually bring that cellphone, or if these events were like, hey, come and actually get something for you, it might incentivize people to...
Totally understand your point, right? I mean, the, the, I think, I think everyone would agree that the, to your point about making it as easy as possible, you know, curbside collection is the kind of gold standard in that. And yet, it's not possible to manage some of these very specific and particularly regulated materials in that way, right? We're, I think the city is, as I was saying, ahead of the curve regionally and still having a pretty broad single-stream recycling program when others have eliminated a lot of materials that they can collect that way. These types of things are just not practical to collect in that fashion. We'd have to have, you know, seven to ten trucks go down the street to pick up all the different things and keep them separated. And I don't mean you were proposing that, I'm just sort of laying out kind of the spectrum, right? And so, so from there, for these types of things, it is somewhat necessary for it to not be a point of, you know, on-street collection, but for folks to get it to a location. I think we'd welcome opportunities to make that more accessible. It's somewhat contingent upon the capacity of the provider, right? I mean, we, we're reliant also on PRC's capacity for the hosting of events and how many they can have and where, as well as, you know, our own capacity to manage the program. I, I hear you loud and clear on the cost. I do think that the fees are reasonable and pretty much consistent with PRC and others who do this model across the Commonwealth. So we're, we're not, I, I wouldn't describe our, our approach as unique, but to the extent that there are ways to further incentivize, we'd be open to having those conversations.
I mean, is this the, is this a hundred and seventy-five thousand? That's not the total cost, is it?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Seems low to me. I mean, we cover our own employees and things like that. Oh, that's the PRC part. That's just the, right, that's what I mean.
Sorry, that's the total cost of our engagement with PRC.
Right, so that's just a small piece of...
There's other, the cost of hauling our additional, our addition, like the cost to the city to haul away a citizen's e-waste would be on top of that as part of the fee structure that they, that they collect.
Right, I mean, I'm just sort of trying to figure out like how much would it cost ultimately to... I mean, it would be nice just to know, like, how much would it cost to let people drop off their e-waste for free? And how much would it cost to actually pay people to come and drop off their e-waste? I mean, I know that it's not, it would just be something to look at just to sort of know, you know, what we might go for in terms of grants and that kind of thing.
Back-of-the-envelope calculation, if you were to double the cost associated with today's authorization, that would fully subsidize the fee.
Yeah, so I mean, that's what I'm, I'm saying is like, how much would that ultimately? I mean, it would be more than double this, presumably, or no?
Unless I'm misunderstanding, we could follow up afterward to confirm this. But, but to the best of my knowledge, the amount associated with this agreement covers the city's contribution towards the processing. And then the user's contribu-- the contribution via the fee makes up the other half. So the other costs are already borne by us. So no, I think doubling that amount would, would reflect full payment for the full cost of the program.
Okay, and then conceivably tripling it might make it possible to incentivize people to recycle their e-waste. I mean, I, I'm just curi-- I mean, I know that this is, I don't mean to sort of be a downer for the... But I, I just have a feeling that there aren't as many, I mean, there may be lots of e-waste being recycled and that's great and it's so nice that there are so many people. But I'm sure there's lots of e-waste that also isn't being recycled. And whether it's being thrown over a hillside or just tossed in the garbage, because these devices are smaller and smaller, you know.
So there'd be, if we were to pay people, if we were to compensate folks for doing it, that would invite an entirely additional set of legal questions that I don't think I'm qualified to answer here today. I will just note that for, for devices as small as cellphones, it's not part of our program, but there, there are many free ways to recycle those in an appropriate manner. There are not insignificant number of businesses. I happen to know that like all Target locations, just as an example, have a place where you can sort of just drop one into a bin. You don't pay for that. It's small enough that they can process it. So you can do that for free. It's really larger items that you can't take there that, that we're hoping. Not to say that if someone came in with a bag of five old cellphones, we wouldn't take them. But, but there are other ways folks can dispose of those. Think more TVs, cans of unused paint, you know, bigger items. As Councilwoman Wilson was asking, something with a large battery. That, that's the real target certainly of this program.
Okay.
Probably the thing I would also add there too is that, you know, certainly something we can explore in future contracts, increasing the frequency with which they're providing the service. One of the limitations for us is, you know, we as the city, at our environmental services location where the recycling pickup is, we're not certified to hold the hazardous waste for any amount of time. So, you know, the Resources Council is literally, like, when, when people drop it off at the end of their pickup, they are literally taking it away to their appropriate location. And so that also, you know, provides, I think, and it would be extremely difficult for us to achieve that certification, if not impossible. And so, you know, that, that gives us something else to contemplate when we go to, when we look at this in the future in terms of, you know, increasing the opportunity for folks to participate. Making it a little bit easier, addressing the accessibility question. This time is part of that as well.
Well, it, it, for now anyway, I'd be happy to help promote this through the community groups and that kind of thing. And even, even just smaller ways, just, you know, in general, the e-waste recycling and hazardous materials. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else first round? If not, second round, Madam President?
I just briefly want to ask why there wasn't an RFP, why, why we're doing it this way, extending the contract? Because I always am hesitant whenever we do that.
Oh, no, this was a, this is a term in the contract. It was part of the, when we competitively bid this via RFP, I want to say 2021, it included the option year. This is just, this is, this is, this is us exercising, this is us asking for permission to exercise the option.
Okay. I just want to vote for it, but I want to be clear because I don't like voting for things that we don't...
And this question has come up, not infrequently recently, so just very briefly. Typically, we negotiate contracts with an initial period and an optional extension period. And we do that usually with the presumption that we'll take advantage of the extensions, but that, that gives us an opportunity, if the vendor is not performing, to exit earlier, right? So instead of signing a three-year contract, we'll sign a two-year contract with a one-year extension. It would be our intention from the outset to utilize all three years. But if they've failed to perform, which is not the case here, then we'll ask your authorization to extend, and then at the end of the contract, we'll rebid. So it's a, it's a protection actually for the city in the event that someone we select does not perform, rather than us avoiding an opportunity to put it back to market.
Good, I feel comfortable. Good, thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just didn't know, is there, so there, I just want to say, there are opportunities out there where we charge, there are opportunities to recycle or dispose of properly that are free, whereas we, that are out there, but we charge to take that in. And I understand that for some, I'm not sure why, how we come to these, like, two, two ninety, two dollars and ninety-five cents a pound for a quart of oil. And so like, if you take that to AutoZone, they'll take it for free. Is, and also like, if you take electronics to the Guardian Storage, which is in the Strip, and I've taken a printer there in the past, that's free. Is there a way to, just like we do on our site for other things that direct them to other websites outside the city? Is there a way to include like, here are some free options? Here are some other alternatives in this, and there's, there's like a pop-up that comes up. Do you realize you're going outside of the city's website? We're not responsible for what you're gonna view next. But then there is also, if we can do that, I think we can also offer guidance to safe dispose of, like for instance, materials like latex paint, latex and acrylic paint that the EPA gives guidance on to, to let them dry or put kitty litter in it or something else to make it harden, and then you can dispose of it in the, in the garbage.
Leads to the second part of your question. I think we certainly could explore that. If, if there's, you know, EPA or DEP or other forms of guidance that we can just make more readily available to folks, that, that's, that's an easy yes, and we'll happily look into that. Directing folks to other resources, we always have to be careful that we are not indirectly or unintentionally advantaging one private business over another. So I think, off the top of my head, if there were a nonprofit organization or which PRC might have this resource, but if some, if a third party had a resource where they maintained a kind of compendium, right, of that information that we could direct folks to, I'd be comfortable with that. Us self-maintaining it, we run the risk that we inadvertently miss someone and now we've, we've kind of run afoul of our obligation to be even-handed with everyone. So that, that's what makes that difficult occasionally.
I understand. As you can, as you can tell, on my, on my, my duty to clear out the basement of someone else's house, I was like, trying to save some money here. So I'm sure all residents are looking for that. So I didn't, even though, you know, we're trying to do the right thing, make sure they do recycle and provide them opportunities, just thinking that there are some cheaper options. So, all right, I'm happy to explore that, or, you know, talk about that further.
Thank you. Councilman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one last thought I'd like to leave you with, and then, Mr. Chair, if I could cast a, I vote on this and all remaining bills. I had the pleasure of meeting Sarah Alessio from PRC probably twenty-odd years ago. And there was a fact they shared with me that I'd never forgotten, always stuck with me. And keep in mind, this data was accurate twenty years ago, so you can only imagine how staggering it is today. But one cigarette butt discarded into the street will contaminate forty-eight thousand gallons of water with sixteen known carcinogens. And at that time, three hundred million cigarette butts were hitting streets. Just try to wrap your brain around the, the, you know, the staggering effects. If you think it's just, oh, it's just one cigarette butt in the street, it isn't. So anyway, with that, great conversation. I really appreciate you taking the time to spend with us here today to do this and clearly in the affirmative. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Just real quick, and I know we've spent a lot of time, this is a great area that we all, I'm sure we could talk more about. To follow up on Councilwoman Warwick's questions, can I request to see what, how many people have paid? Or like, what is the revenue of those payments?
Absolutely.
Right? And so then we would have a count of what is the scale, right? And so we can see whether it's an amount that we can defray or even turn around, right? And then if we're going to pull that data, can I also see the amount that people are paying to drop off their yard waste? Because I would love to waive those fees, right? And so just as Councilwoman Warwick was pointing out, that we're charging people, but we want them to do it, which is not what you do when you want people to do something. You don't actually put fees in the, as a barrier, right? It's a disincentive. So let's not also disincentivize our composting of yard waste. We have yard waste drop-off.
On, on yard waste, in addition to collecting it twice a year, if you drop it off and have a city address, you're only charged if you're dropping it off in a pickup truck. Or, and, and I do understand that...
It's bulky.
I, I get that.
That's the whole point of it.
I think you can understand the protection that we're shooting for there is we don't want a commercial business to utilize our disposal for free and have the public subsidize that cost if it's a commercial lawn-killing business, right? So there's a bit of a, again, a balance.
I'll just ask for the data, and then we can have another discussion on another, another long agenda. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I have one question, although slightly different. Municipal composting, is that something we're at all looking into or considering?
Absolutely, looking into, considering. Lot of, lot of thoughts, energy on that. Have not really kind of formalized anything in terms of a plan of action. But it's certainly something that is on our radar of services that we would love to provide internally from the department. But just kind of covalusing around thoughts and ideas at the moment.
Okay. In addition to DPW's work around this, the Planning Department has also been doing some investigations and thinking around that. I'll add, and I'll give credit to Director Hornstein and Sean. Hornstein and Sean, that I think there's, long-term, this is not something that we could implement next year or in the immediate horizon, but we've been thinking a lot about increasing the frequency of recycling pickup to weekly, and how we might build a long-term plan to arrive at that, look, at that, that goal when we can.
Okay. I'd be more than willing-
I'll go one, fourth round, 10th round, I don't care.
I'd be more than willing to also just help thinking it through. It's, it's a new concept to me, that has been brought to me by community members who have asked, are we considering this? And so I've just started sort of investigating on my own, and learning how other cities are beginning to deal with this. So more than willing to also help out to the extent that I can. Third round, Madam President?
Just real briefly, the, is there any thought, like, I really notice, like, a lot of the trash that's really significant, and the hard-to-recycle materials that I notice, are a lot of, oftentimes in communities that are struggling a little bit more. And I'm wondering if there's any way to help offset that cost, like, maybe even using some of the Stop the Violence funds to do grants to help people to recycle them. Because there is this broken window theory, and there's all kinds of things. And I think if you're giving somebody a cleaner environment and helping them to take greater pride, that would certainly go, or be included in stopping the violence, I think, in some ways. And so I'm just wondering if there's some, if we can look into that. And I'd love to work with you on that, because I really think that's the, the cost to the city of cleaning up their neighborhoods that are experiencing all this, you know, the, the illegal dumping and all the other things, is tremendous to the taxpayers. So I think in some way, it also benefits the taxpayers. It benefits everybody if we do this in a better way. That's all I'm going to say, in terms of that. So I really would like to work with you on even, either using the Stop the Violence funds, or identifying funds where we could put in some, lower some, lower cost, or totally free. Because initially, when we started, that's what I wanted. It was because I saw what was happening in some of the neighborhoods, and I thought, I wanted to help, to help get this trash up off the street. And then I do want to thank on the, for the Clean Pittsburgh Commission, all the work that they do as well. And I want to thank our person who's on there, is Lori Beth Jones, and she does a great job, too. And I just want to thank everyone for their work on that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gross?
Councilwoman Lovell, I'm deeply disappointed in you. I've been giving a speech about municipal composting for nine straight years at this table. I will start from the top if you'd like me to. When my daughter was seven, we went to Tacoma, Washington. When we finished dinner at our friend's house, we all walked outside, and there were two matching, big, beautiful, lidded municipal garbage bins, right? But one was green, and one was brown. You scraped your entire plate crab legs included into the green bin, because the green bin was picked up weekly, and that was composting. The brown bin, you did not put the stinky crab legs, or all your food, any of your food in, because it's only picked up every other week, right? My daughter's 16 now. She was seven then. And I've been telling that story at this table ever since. And not only that, you clearly have not been sitting through our, our annual budget discussions on the Equipment Leasing Authority, where every year since then, and I've been studying the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, that has done studies on composting, municipal composting, that says you can cut the tonnage of your waste by 50%, right? And so every year, at the Equipment Leasing Authority discussions, I say, what is the miles per gallon that our waste haulers get? Lo and behold, at first, they told us it was five miles per gallon. Now they're telling us it's three miles per gallon. Each one of those drives how many miles out to the landfill? 15 miles, either out to Emprearial or out to Westmoreland County, every time it fills up. After it passes your house and picks up your garbage, it drives particulate spewing, you know, really bad for the environment and bad for employees. That entire crew drives that truck 15 miles out to that landfill and dumps it. If we cut that tonnage in half, that would be half as many vehicles mile traveled, right? You could do twice as much with each crew and with each truck. So that's the speech I've been giving that you missed for the last nine years. I am wholeheartedly also in favor of municipal composting, if you've never heard of it, by the way.
I apologize.
I'm getting a little punchy. This has been a very little discussion, but-
I'm going to tell her the same thing I told Patrick.
You also voted no when I tried to do pilots for composting into the budget for two or three years in a row. And so, yeah, at budget, I tried to do capital budget amendments for several years. I'm grateful that, first the budget administration, now the Gani administration has solicited grant funding so that we can do some composting pilots. And if you'll give me time, after the meeting, I'll talk to you, you're off, about composting.
I'd be more than willing to do that. I've heard your speech about the trucks and the mileage. I've also heard that story. I apologize for just now putting it all together and understanding the need of why this could be important for our city. So we can, we can talk offline. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? That takes us to Bill 1685.
Bill 1685, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance and the director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to enter into an agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company granting it a permanent utility easement for the erection, installation, use, operation, maintenance, repair, removal of cables, switches, and transformers, in order to service and provide power to electric vehicle charging stations and other fixtures and apparatus thereto upon, over, along, across, under, and through city property located at 2945 through 3001 Railroad Street, Lot and Block 25B15, for use by electric-powered city sanitation trucks at no cost to the city.
Motion to, please, may I leave? Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? That takes us to Human Resources Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Burgess. We have one new paper, Bill 1681.
Bill 1681, resolution providing for the filing of applications by the Commonwealth of PA Department of Human Services for grants in connection with the Joint Jobs Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network, and providing for the authorization to enter into agreements with various agencies, and to pay for expenditures for costs to support, implement, and administer the program, cost not to exceed $3,828,594.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we have someone to the table to describe this program? Am I just not recognizing it, or is this a brand-new program and a $4 million expenditure?
It is not.
Thank you.
Always, if you would just introduce yourself for the public record.
I'm Deidre Cochrane, Assistant Director for Department of Human Resources and Civil Service for the Pittsburgh Partnership.
Hello, I'm Kayla Loudon Waller, the Earn Supervisor for the Pittsburgh Partnership.
Thank you, all. If you would help us out, I, I thought we had a brand called Learn and Earn that we allocated funds to, and I thought it was in the ballpark of $1 or $2 million. And so is this that, or is something else? So please refresh, refresh our memories. I appreciate it.
Okay. Learn and Earn is actually for the youth. The Earn program is a program that we've been running for the city for over 20 years. So we do this every year. It's not a new program. We work with the Department of Human Services, which was formerly known as the Department of Public Welfare, to help young, well, not young, but to help city residents become self-sufficient. We receive our referrals from the Department of Public Welfare, and we provide job search assistance, job skills training, and just stuff to help them to become self-sufficient. And they are mainly single parents.
It's the employment centers.
Not the neighborhood employment centers. That's another-
Okay, that's something else. Maybe I need a whole refresher on which programs which. I apologize, but, okay, so please, continue.
The Earn program, but as I said, it was formerly known as Spock, and then it, and that was back in, I want to say, maybe 1988. And then it changed names in probably the early 90s to Earn. And Earn stands for Employment Advancement and Retention Network. And that's just to provide services such as job skills, job training, life skills, soft skills, and just to try to help the, the people who need help to become self-sufficient. So we do contract with subcontractors. We have three subcontractors, actually. We work with EDSI, which is Educational Data Systems Incorporated, Goodwill Industries, and an organization called PADCO. So our clients come into our office, which is located on Wood Street. They come to our office, and they give orientation, and then we send them out to our subcontractors to provide the services.
And it's also important to note that we're not a, we can't, like, recruit for the program. They're directly referral from the Department of Human Services. So it's not a recruitment program. It's a referral-based program.
And I also want to note, too, that it does not cost the city any money to operate this program. The money is given to us, and we come to you to ask you if we can encumber the money, and then we use that money. And we actually pay the city the cost of city services. So we actually pay the city to let us operate the program. And we are actually city employees who operate the program.
Thank you. That gives me a lot of clarity, because I just, the, maybe this was, like, the title I was reading, I was like, is this a new form, what it was, the title reads that we're spending the money. And so that's, I was trying to ask my staff, and I was reading the text file, like, is this coming out of the general fund? Where is this money coming from? So that makes a lot more sense. And so now, it's, it's, it's way more familiar, right? So we're, this is a partnership, and we're accepting the funds to, to, to run it. So as you said, it's, there's no cost to our taxpayer budget. So, right, okay, I appreciate that clarity. And I think it's now kind of starting to fit into my head. Apologize. It's been a long, it's been a long discussion already today. Thank you for waiting all this time till we got this far in the agenda. I appreciate that. And if you wouldn't mind, I'll just follow up then. Maybe my staff and I need a briefing and overview, but I won't, I won't take any more time on today's agenda. But I really appreciate your, your information. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And we can also get you brochures, and we can come up, and, or you are welcome to come to our office if you'd like to see it as well, or we can come to you, whatever is easier for you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick, did I see your hand go up?
Oh, yeah, I, that, that clarifies. But I, it's funny, because, I mean, I'm new to this relatively, so, but there is sort of generally, it feels like kind of a disconnect between all the different services that are available, right, like through DHS. So, I mean, I'm, I'm glad that you're here, and so that, so if there were ever, you know, again, just to sort of inform, you know, educate communities and whatnot about, so they would go through DHS, so they would approach DHS, and then DHS would send them to you. I mean-
You want me to explain on the process?
Sure, yeah, please.
So how it works is a client, or, you know, someone who needs financial services or help, if they apply for cash benefits from the Department of Human Services, they're automatically referred to a program, which would be either city earn or county earn, and they make that decision. You cannot receive cash assistance from the Department of Human Services without attending a program, a program to gain employment. So it's, it helps, well, you know, it's a beautiful thing what we do. We also, on top of the, you know, because there's other things that come into play, or the reasons of why they aren't working. So we have, you know, remedial, burial remediation, things that try to get them out of that cycle of consistently coming back to receive the funds from the Department of Human Services. So our basic goal, or ultimate goal, is to help them become self-sufficient by getting the things out of the way that are prohibiting them from keeping the position, or, you know, even looking for a position.
Okay. I mean, maybe I'll, I don't want to take too much time at the table, but I'd definitely be curious to-
We're kind of like hands-off as far as how we get them. We don't really have a choice in the matter. Like, right now, the, the numbers are extremely low. Because of the COVID and things of that nature, they are allowing a lot of them to stay home. It's going to increase in that, because they're putting things back into play, because, you know, things are opening up now, jobs are opening, and things of that nature. So it's, we're getting back to the way that it used to be, but the whole time through COVID, we still had to work with the participants, whether they were home or not, or, you know, working. But our ultimate goal was to help them come off of the Department of Health, you know, Human Services, and just walk into a career, something that will help them become self-sufficient, so they don't need those things.
And, and how many, how many folks do you have working in your offices?
Current working, staff-wise, or, staff-wise, we have, on our floor, I want to say, nine employees.
In our whole department, we have 19.
So basically, if someone applies for cash benefits, DHS sends them to you, and then you would say, refer them hypothetically to Goodwill, or whatever, somewhere? And then, and then, is there follow-up on whether or not that, you know, that works? So if they get hired at Goodwill, and how long, just hypothetically?
So once they, we have guidelines from the state that we have to follow all the way through. There's, you know, you can't just do what you want, or, you know, we have to stick to the guidelines. So once they are employed, we follow them for a complete year. And there's benchmarks at six months and 12 months. Once they complete that 12 months of service, we will close them out, and hopefully that will move them forward to not, you know, coming back to the program. Sometimes life shows up, you know, you can get laid off, different things happen. They're always, as long as they apply for the cash assistance, they're going to come right back. Yeah. But the ultimate goal is to work with them for that year, once they find employment. Some people find it quickly, some people, it takes them a little longer. So we can potentially have someone cross, you know, for a few, couple of years.
And so, just to clarify with the cash assistance, I mean, does that include, like, SNAP, like SNAP benefits?
So we also do have SNAP, and the SNAP participants are not required-
Okay.
-to do that. You know, they, they are what we call volunteers. So they're just, they want to come in to see what they can do. If they can find something, then they do that as well. But if you just receive cap or medical, you are not required. But if it's just the cash assistance that pushes them into a program.
I'd like to add something else, also. Our contractors are paid on a performance-based contract. So it sounded like you were kind of seeing if we kind of had any responsibility to the contractors. Once the clients get there, they get paid per placement. So the client, they get paid if the client, if we send the client there, the contractor gets a, gets a payment. If the client gets a job, the contractor gets a payment.
So when you say the contractor, you mean-
Goodwill.
Goodwill, for example, right? Is that part of this funding?
Right.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right.
All right, all right. Okay, yeah, well, that's, that's all interesting. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation?
Thank you. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
That takes us to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. One supplemental paper, Bill 1723.
Bill, excuse me, Bill 1723, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article 1, Section 902.03 zoning map by changing from HC Highway Commercial District to SP9 Bakery Square District, certain property roughly bounded by Penn Avenue, East Liberty Boulevard, and the Pittsburgh Regional Transit East Busway, all in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, 11th Ward, and by changing from UI Urban Industrial District to SP9 Bakery Square District, that certain property roughly bounded by Penn Avenue and the existing easternmost boundary of the SP9 Bakery Square District in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, 12th Ward.
Motion to send to Planning Commission for a report and recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The report will be sent to the Planning Commission. That takes us to deferred paper, Bill 270, and Councilman, and 465. Read together, please, Madam Clerk.
Bill 270, 2022-0270, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title VII, Business Licensing, Article 10, rental of residential housing by creating a new Chapter 783 Short-Term Rental Permit Program, and Bill 46, 2022-465, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Traffic, Article VII, Parking, Chapter 549 Residential Parking Permit Program, 549.08 Visitor Permits, Non-Resident Permits, so as to relate the issuance of residential parking permits for short-term rentals to the issuance of licenses by the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections authorizing the operation of short-term rentals in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the bill, I'm looking to hold for one week. I pledged to counsel last week that I would provide an update on what's, on the final product that would, potentially could be an amendment to, or, you know, replaced by substitution, either one. I have not done that, because there is not a final product yet. So I'm looking to hold one week. I believe we can have something in place to have a discussion about in a couple of days.
Second. Discuss. Thank you. I just want to thank Councilman Wilson for working on this, and Mohammed so much for- Thank you. I just want to thank Councilman Wilson for working on this and Mohammed so much for so long. I'm trying to get this to a place where we're, uh, more agreeable. And he listens to me every time he comes up. I yell at him about something about it. And so I just want to, I want to apologize to him, but he usually calls when I'm trying to get ready and this does not come naturally, okay? Sometimes it doesn't even come anymore. So, so I just want to say thank you, Councilman Wilson, for all your work on this and I'm looking forward to working with you some more. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, a motion?
Motion to hold one week.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill, both bills will be held one week. Bill six sixty-one.
Bill two thousand twenty-two six sixty-one, ordinance accepting a new street name, Woodring Court in the twenty-third ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in June two thousand twenty-two. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held, you said three weeks?
Two.
Two, sorry, two weeks. Uh, new papers, Bill sixteen ninety-one.
Bill sixteen ninety-one, ordinance accepting a new street name Cougar Circle in the fourteenth ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in May two thousand twenty-three. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill sixteen ninety-two.
Bill sixteen ninety-two, ordinance accepting a new street name Principal Lamb in the eighteenth ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in May two thousand twenty-three. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty Uniform Street Naming and Property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill sixteen ninety-three.
Bill sixteen ninety-three, ordinance accepting two new street names, Composite Street and Battery Street in the fifteenth ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street names were approved by CPAC in May two thousand twenty-three. The names listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? That takes us to Recreation Youth and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strausberger. Our first new papers, Bill sixteen eighty-eight.
Bill sixteen eighty-eight, resolution providing for the designation of certain public properties within the Hayes and St. Clair neighborhoods to be formalized and adopted as a city park and no immediate cost to the city.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I am going to first make a motion to amend, um, with a voice amendment. It's a amendment at the request of, uh, Budget Office. So if you're reading the body of the bill, there's a section one that, um, the city council will dedicate subject properties within Hayes and St. Clair neighborhoods, currently known as Hayes Woods, Hayes Woods Park. And there are three bullet points underneath that with various block, um, and lot numbers. This is to add a fourth bullet point, um, that was just accidentally left out. So this, uh, would be a voice amendment, sorry, let me pull it up, to add, um, the, um, a fourth bullet point and then ninety-two dash H dash one two five as the additional block and lot number.
Second.
Yes.
I'm sorry, let me rephrase that because I just, the, the appropriate one would be block ninety-two dash H comma lot one twenty-five.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill has been amended. Any further discussion on the bill's amended?
Uh, I just want to thank, um, uh, Patrick Cornell for answering all my questions and very thoroughly, um, summarizing all of the work that has gone into this and over the past two plus years, um, between city and U R A. Um, so, thank you.
Um, yeah, I did. So this is very exciting. Of course, Hayes Woods is, uh, in District Five and, you know, it's, it's a new park and with lots of potential. Uh, I do have one, one issue that did come up and I don't know, Director, maybe if you wanted to come to the table. It's not really a budget issue. Uh, it's, the question came up, um, about the deer. Uh, and I guess I'm going to use this.
Another hour and a half long conversation.
Um, so, so twofold. One is just, it would be great to have a general update on what's, what's happening with deer management. But also the concern here is that currently, or in, in Hayes Woods, there has been hunting. Because it wasn't an official city park where hunting is not allowed. So hunting has been going on. And of course that has, so the concern is now that it is a park, if somehow there's, if the hunting stops, then we just have a new, you know, a new explosion of deer, um, at any rate. So that, that concern was raised to, to me and, uh, so I just would kind of like to, to get an update on the deer management.
Sure.
Yeah.
So Jake Pollock, Deputy Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget. You're, you're correct, right, that, um, up until, it's been about six years since the U R A purchased this land. And during that entire time, many, um, steps were being taken to prepare it to become a park. But it took that long to, I mean, the combination of placement of, um, conservation easements, re-subdivision of the parcel to split out a portion that is in Baldwin Borough that needed to be given to the, to Baldwin. Adjustment of a small, like a point two acre corner of the parcel to allow for a new driveway access for a, an individual who lives next to the park, but needed to basically cut across a corner to have a new bridge to get to her home, um, that accommodated a, a vehicle for someone with a physical disability. So, so there was a lot of work that took place and then, and I, I give that backstory just to say that in that time, um, it's not been an official park, right? And so, um, per, um, Pennsylvania law, it, it, I'm, I'm not surprised to hear one that there are a lot of deer that live there, given its size and, and that under certain circumstances in season, hunting could have occurred there. Um, you're correct that hunting is not permitted in city parks. And so with this designation, we would begin the process consistent with all of our other parks of posting it for, to prohibit hunting, which is an across-the-board consideration that we deploy in all city parks. How that affects, um, deer populations and the management of deer generally is also a question um, that we're working, um, uh, I think aggressively to, to handle. The way in which that works for your and the public's understanding is, um, in order to be considered by, um, the game commission for a deer management program, you first have to essentially run a pilot program within the normal deer hunting season. So we are working on plans which we intend to, um, brief council on and have a wider public discussion on, probably shortly after the council August recess to describe plans for an initial effort in the kind of November deer hunting season of this year, um, that would satisfy the state requirements for, um, piloting efforts. And then that could, um, if successful, as we hope it would be, form the basis of a broad, of a permit from the state to have a broader strategy and policy that could occur outside of that, um, window of time. But there's really nothing we can launch until November as the city doesn't currently have a program. But work is underway to prepare for that. And again, I think in September, we'll be in a position of a conversation with you all ahead of that November launch.
Great. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question about ownership. So right now, these parcels that we mentioned, are these ones that are city-owned?
They were purchased, we, we received the deeds for these parcels from the U R A about ten days ago. So they are city-owned as of today, but until very recently, they were still owned by the U R A. So this action is meant to follow the fact that we have now acquired them and they are deeded to us to then take the further necessary step of, um, designating them as parkland now that they're in our ownership.
And so then are there still parcels that are not, that are within what's called Hayes Woods? But, um, that are still, that will still be owned by you, the U R, U R A?
No, not, not, not at this time. Um, everything that was split, so there, there was the, um, group of parcels that the U R A initially purchased. Some of those parcels, um, crossed a municipal boundary from the city into Baldwin. So part of the work that was done over the past six years was to, um, subdivide those parcels, draw the line at the city border and then convey the portions that are in Baldwin Borough to Baldwin. So the U R A directly sold those to Baldwin after the subdivision was done. I think, I think essentially sold them for a dollar. I gave them, donated to them, to them. We then, as I mentioned, again, I can't recall off the top of my head if it was an easement or another subdivision, but a very, very tiny sliver of the park at its very edge was transferred to an adjacent property owner in exchange for a portion of, of her backyard essentially to facilitate access to her house. Her house happens to be across the stream from her main road, the bridge that she had washed out. And to repair that and restore access, it had to go via a different route and that just had needed to take a tiny little sliver of our land. In addition to that, there was, these parcels have not been, the parcel lines had not been, um, resuraveled in a long time and there was a, um, technical or data error in the county Recorder of Deeds Office G I S file for the parcel boundaries. It took a few months to correct that as well. So the, all of those steps having been taken and, uh, D C N R conservation easements having been placed on the land to ensure that any natural resources that might be beneath it are protected and can't be, um, you know, uh, extracted in the future. That took several years at the beginning of this process. Once all that work was completed and pursuant to prior authorizations, we engaged in a transfer of, from the, uh, U R A to the city for one dollar for the deeds to the properties. So we now own them separately. Counsel is authorized through the, um, the ARPA budgeting process and a previous version, and having nothing to do with the amendments that were introduced today, the reimbursement to the U R A of their, their six years worth of holding costs and the legal fees associated with all the actions that I just mentioned, since they were conducting those activities on our behalf. So we'll be, um, paying them two million dollars to cover those costs. And then with this action today, the process really is completed in that we have taken possession of the properties. They're now owned by the city. Their borders are correctly aligned with the city border and everything else. The easements are in place and so we're in a position where we can formally designate it as a park. Assuming council's approval of today's action, kind of in a coterminous manner, we're, um, beginning the process of seeking Rad, the, the Allegheny Regional Asset District recognition for this as a regional park as well. All right, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Warburg?
Yeah, I just have just one more question since we're here. Um, could you clarify? And if not, I can, um, there is a big project with Duquesne Light that's happening.
Duquesne Light, Duquesne Light already has, um, and, and this predated the U R A's ownership or our ownership and, and there was an easement that already existed there for them. Um, there are some high tension power lines that run through the site. They need to, um, reposition them within their current right-of-way. So I, I, I believe they're building new towers and moving the, the lines slightly south to be further from the face of the hillside or other, and otherwise, in other ways, improving or repairing their existing infrastructure. That is requiring, um, a access easement on their part and their ability to build a temporary access road in order to get in and out to make those improvements. It's possible, though we don't know yet for sure, that we might, um, adopt that access road as one of the means of permanent ingress and egress to the park, at which point we'd take it from them in its temporary condition and improve upon it until it's a way in and out. But that, we're still looking at that. In the meantime, um, you know, they have as a utility kind of an access right to maintain their existing infrastructure. They're not adding anything new, though they will be replacing components of what they're and it might be moving slightly kind of within the band that they presently maintain.
Yeah, it's kind of a weird, uh, spot because it creates, I mean, it's like these huge, these huge, but it also creates this kind of nice meadow, which is, and like a view. It's kind of an interesting space. So you kind of come out and then these
I, I.
big towers are there, but you have this nice grassy area and this view.
Yeah, I, that, I, that, generally speaking, that's not going to change. Um, you know, it, uh, something of that nature will still be there. And, and there will be a lot of work after today's action as we begin actually, or further efforts to master plan the park and then plan over a series of years for budget improvements to, you know, add amenities or add access points and, and turn it from, uh, a wild space, um, into a, a park. It, the, the plan has always been, although there was plenty of opportunity to discuss this, that it remain a pretty, um, to be a more primitive park than some of our other regional parks and be, be more about preserving kind of wild spaces, but also make them accessible to the public. So I don't, we don't anticipate, you know, like building fifteen playgrounds and ten ball fids or anything like that there, right? We're talking about trails and, you know, maybe some access roads and visitor, a visitor center. Minimal, um, work like that, really a lot of ecological restoration, you know, the removal of invasive species and the promotion of a more, um, native, uh, you know, habitat i- is the primary focus there. But, but the power lines are still going to, uh, be there. They were there before we bought it. They're going to have to continue to be there and we'll have to figure out exactly how those, um, publicly accessible vistas maybe intersect with that easement. I'm sure that that's something we can resolve, but that's not been sorted out quite yet.
I, I'd love to see some sort of rustic camping possibilities. I think that would be really neat for people who live in Pittsburgh to be able to do, you know, just do an overnight.
Yeah, and in fact, I might be mistaken on the timeline, but I'm fairly certain it was last year that an ordinance was adopted to make that legally permissible and, and it's entirely consistent with our plans that that be part of the programming in this park over time. Am I right about the timing, Councilman?
Gives direction, it gives the authority to the Parks Director to enter into an agreement to provide camping in the parks.
That's what I was thinking of, yeah.
And Riverview Park will be the pilot.
Right. I, I, I think as we, over time, as we build out, um, or make investments in Hayes Woods, I think it could be another ideal location is my only point, so.
There's also a, uh, camping night on the Hazelwood Green if anyone's interested, at the end of July, so.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, I just, real quickly, I just wanted to say, we had this issue with the hunting you mentioned in, in parks. And, um, what I found out back then was that even though the, the city doesn't enforce the gaming laws, that there was some way that, um, in the state allows hunting in parks, we don't or something. But so that there's some way, the only way we enforce it is through, I think, gun laws or some other things like that. I can't remember exactly. But I don't want the public to think that we're going to be able to come do things we can't do. So go ahead.
As the property owner, we have the right to post our, our parks for hunting not being allowed.
You have a right to post it.
Right.
We don't enforce the, the hunting laws. That's it.
We, we don't enforce them generally, but we can post them as not, not available for hunting.
We can say that.
And we, and we do that consistent with the city ordinance.
Okay. So I just want to say that. I just know that there's something there. But what I do want to say is that I also think that we just spent like three million dollars on, uh, farming and, um, we know that there's a lot of issues with the deer population and the destruction that's happening in some of our parks. And so I think it's just such a difficult balancing act between, honestly, the mayor's really between, working between the food and hunger groups and the animal rights activists. And I think that that's such a difficult situation to be in for all of us, uh, because obviously there's also things happening where people are wrecking into
Sure.
um, deer and you see, you know, slaughtered on the side of the road, um, and just all sorts of things. I think it would be great to have like some really good conversations about, and I hear that you're doing some things and, but I do think we need to do something.
No, absolutely. So again, just to reiterate, our intention is to, to bring a plan that we can discuss, you know, this fall for exactly that reason.
Oh, fall?
So it's not, yeah, it's not, um, it, it's, it's not that we're working on it in a silo. We want to have something ready to, to present to you and to other stakeholders to, to have that discussion. But we fully intend to have it. Again, I was saying earlier, I, I anticipate probably in September, after council returns from its recess would be the time to do that in, in advance of November when
Take a little while.
something would, um, would come up. But just to go back to your, um, initial point, there, there's, there's nothing healthy for the deer that live within city limits at this time about the extent of overpopulation. It, it's a, um, a health risk to them as well, both, um, given
Right.
the law, high population numbers, the food insecurity that they face, the potential conflicts with cars, right? And so I, I think there is a broad recognition even among folks, um, who rightfully care deeply about animals and their welfare, that, that we have an obligation to
I think we all do. We just don't want to see them laying on the, slaughtered on the side of the road or
Right.
um, somebody else, a person injured or people
Absolutely.
causing landslides or people not getting food, access to food.
Yeah.
All sorts of things. I think it's just, let's have an adult conversation about it.
Of course.
But I just want to say, I think that that's a very challenging situation for the mayor to be in and, and for city council. But, but I think it's something we have to address. But, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just can't let this moment pass because, you know, on one hand, I'm, I'm excited about the, the park, you know, Hays Woods being protected and, you know, rightly so, I think. I enjoy all our parks, especially, you know, the ones that are, you know, that are protected like this. The, you know, because there are some green spaces that we use that aren't designated as a park, but in terms of like how we're going to manage this, because I know, in terms of like what, and you were alluding to this, in terms of like, well, this park looks like we'll be investing in trails and we'll be investing in, I can't remember what else you said, but then it just seemed like you're like just to boost the ecological, like nature of what's happening there.
Broadly speaking, the highest priorities here. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to finish, because once I finish my thought, you'll, you'll see where I'm going with this. So then how do we manage, I hear what you're saying.
Well, that's a big assumption. Okay.
So then how do we manage, you know, a lot of jokes, I'm just not catching on. How do we manage, you know, all the, the, I don't want to use the word disinvestment because we couldn't predict that there would be so many landslides in Riverview Park. We couldn't predict, you know, maybe we could predict it, you know, on some level, you know, X amount of landslides a year that will happen in this region, but they happened in Riverview Park, they happened in other parks and that's on top of the, the tennis courts, the rec centers, not the recs, the, the centers that are in the parks in terms of, you know, the shelters. I mean, I can go on about, you know, disinvestment or investments that we have to make. And so then how do we manage this if we're adopting this as a city park and, you know? I just want to hear what the management plan's going to be since there is so much money that we have to spend already in our current parks.
Right. So, consistent with, I think, the, the local community and, and sort of wider wishes and almost at this point, 10 years' worth of discussion around this location, right? It's always been envisioned, as I said, to be, to, to remain a fairly wild place, not a highly developed, highly programmed park. So again, the, the costs that we imagine here for physical investments would be much more along the lines of trails, you know, the, the necessary kind of site ingress and egress, but not additional facilities or things of that nature. So I don't know that, that Hays Woods under that vision would be competing with the types of investments that need to be made in other parks in their recreational assets and facilities, right? As it relates to landslide management, you know, that is an issue that is, has grown dramatically in its significance in the past decade and will continue to do so. I think it's probably our hundred-year challenge as a, as a city and as a region, right, in the way that climate change is causing that to happen. And so certainly, there are two parts to that answer. One is we're going to continue to plow away at making the necessary repairs or remediations to Riverview Park, certainly where they have the highest density of them in a park, though there are other parks where they exist and there are other city neighborhoods not within a park where it's in a green way or otherwise on public land where we're working on it. And it's a challenge and it is something that we, I wish we could do more quickly and we continue to pursue resources from outside of city taxpayer dollars like federal and then other types of support to address them. But, but it will be a continued challenge. Part and parcel to all of this is why it's, it's necessary to pursue RAD designation of Hays Woods Park so that it, along with the other five regional parks, are eligible not just for our own city, general fund resources or parks tax funds, both of which could be brought to bear to address the needs here and in all of our other parks, but also RAD funds to, to handle something of this scale, which we know will be a regional attraction, right? I mean, it, it is on the city line, right? So, so there are people who live in Baldwin Township, I'm sorry, Baldwin Borough and I believe Castle Shannon and New Homestead and other, other neighborhoods who are immediately, not New Homestead, so that's a neighborhood, Munn Hall, that are immediately abutting the park. And so we imagine folks who are other than city residents will utilize it and so it's appropriate that it be, receive a portion of its support from, from the Regional Asset District. And we've, while, we won't have a definitive answer from them until they consider our 2023 application, we've received initial positive indications that they're eager to consider this for regional asset designation and that there are additional RAD funds that could come to the city to support this and other types of investment of that nature, so.
Yeah, even that's a good discussion because I know we're using RAD funds to, to fix two landslides in Riverview Park and even with trails, I just want to be mindful, even with trails that you would put in, in, in Hays Woods, there will be landslides probably that'll block those. There's like a couple, you know, a couple trails, because like, you know, even in Riverview Park, we want that to be wild as well.
Yeah.
And so we have trails as well and so with those trails, the, two of them I know are blocked off.
I think the advantage we have is that those trails, the ones you're, you're referencing, were built before landslides became such a pressing issue in our region due to, to climate change, right? And so they were constructed in a way that never contemplated that risk and thus were prone to it, right? We now have the benefit for things we are constructing into the future of a better ge- geotechnical kind of understanding of the soils in our region and our parks and how they're behaving in the light of increased rainfall. So my, I, obviously nothing is, is for certain and if you were to ask me if at some point in the next 50 years, a trail we build in Riverview Park might be washed out at some point, of course it will at some point, but I, I think that we are in a position not to invite those same challenges because we're, we will be building these trails with knowledge we now have and some things, lessons we've learned from Riverview about how to build trails that don't present the same risk. We're having to deal with the fact that the trails in Riverview were built a long time ago when we weren't thinking about the same things and so that's part of the answer to your question.
Okay. All right, well, thanks for, thanks for the answer.
Sure.
And providing the input you did, so I'll be, I'm excited for the, you know, to go and use it myself when this, when some of these are, some of these trails are in place and everything, so just wanted to see how we're going to manage all this because, you know, it's like, it's a, but yes, thanks for coming to the table and answering those questions.
I think he's going to tell you to turn your mic on.
Sorry, yep, so Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy is working and they have a dedicated staff member and a grant, I think a $230,000 grant from RK Mellon and there's doing, they're doing some goatscape-ing and, and the trail, there is already a trail system, a lot of it are, are what's sort of called deer trails, so they're really just, they're, they're there, but, but the staff members using volunteers and such to just clear out, ma- make those trails a little bit more usable.
Right.
Rather, rather than building new trails in. So you can go take a walk there now if you.
Right. Yeah, I don't remember the exact amount of the grant, but you're correct, they, they have grant funding and, and their primary focus is on removal of invasive species, which is really important to the rehabilitation of this space because it's, there is a lot of Japanese knotweed and, and other invasive species that have taken over portions of the park and, and so a great deal of ecological restoration work to be done and, and they've been a great partner on that and we imagine that continuing. There are also some old, I guess, access, not, not fully access roads, right, but there are other, you're right, existing kind of pathways through, through the park that could be just improved upon and have their access points improved upon to, to make it accessible in the short term as we think through longer-term visions, so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1689.
Bill 1689, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement with the Music Performers Trust Fund for the Community Concert Series from which the city will receive a fee in the amount of $2,631.22.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1690.
Bill 1690, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement with the University of Pittsburgh Government Relations and Advocacy Office for the Community Concert Series from which the city will receive a fee of $2,500.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our last committee of the day, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first deferred paper is Bill 1553.
Mr. Chair, Madam Booker, would you mind reading the two deferred papers together? I'm going to hold them both.
Bill 1553, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 3239th Street. And Bill 1554, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 166th Banner Way, 9th Ward.
Motion to hold six weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill, both bills will be held six weeks. Lastly, Bill 1682.
Bill 1682, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 2118 Fifth Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda. We do have meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold its regular meeting on Tuesday, July 18th at 10:00 a.m. and a standing committee meeting on Wednesday, July 19th at 10:00 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meetings. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 255-2138. On Thursday, July 20th at 10:00 a.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 0376 as relates to authorizing a cooperation agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh City, the Urban Redevelopment Authority and the Pittsburgh Land Bank. Also on Thursday, July 20th at 1:00 p.m., council will be holding an interview with Director Kubiak, excuse me, for the appointment on the PWSA board. Solicitor Kubiak, I mean, sorry. Anything from members? If not, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
移到
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.[1753.46][1753.46][music]